Okay, it is four o'clock and we will call the July 20th Salina City Commission meeting to order. I would ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, with those that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no awards or proclamations at this time. We will move into Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for someone to come forward and speak about a subject that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to come forward under Citizens Forum? Hey, I know, I feel your pain, so, and please, name and address if you would, please?
Yes, my name's Brian Frazier. I am from Salina, Kansas. I am also president of the Salina NAACP. I'm here to show support for the proposal that the Sunflower-
Okay, we're gonna take comments when we get to that.
I know, I've got just a little short statement I wanted to make, if that's possible.
Is it dealing with the agenda item? When we go over the, I mean, we're not wanting people to come up now and then also under the-
I was just gonna make my statement now and put it before the board, if that's alright with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Like I said, we're here, I'm here in support of the Sunflower Coalition and the actions that they have taken in writing up a proposal to have police reform. What I'd like to do is read a short statement from our national president. The NAACP and Lynx Incorporated, we are releasing a joint statement to express our strong support for the collective outrage and calls for police reform expressed by residents all over the country in response to the murders, the murder of George Floyd, Amon Arbery, and Breonna Taylor and others at the hands of current and former law enforcement officers. The nationwide protests represents the anger, pain, fear, and distrust directed towards law enforcement resulting from decades of brutality against African Americans. For too long, law enforcement and the criminal justice system at large has racially profiled, arrested, convicted, and sentenced African Americans to more harshly, more harshly than the rest of America. As George Floyd's killing tragically demonstrated, any interaction between African Americans and law enforcement can instantaneously become deadly. We will not rest until all, all officers involved in these instances are arrested, charged, and convicted. We must ensure that justice is served in each and every case. The nation's collective condemnation, condemnation of police violence against black community represents a watershed moment. This is the time for systemic changes in policing in our country. We need federal, state, and local reform which impact direct police accountability, limit the use of force, eliminate racial profiling, demilitarize law enforcement, track and report, and ensure proper screening, education, and training of all officers. Local law enforcement agencies receive federal funding and must be made to comply with federal civil rights laws. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments relating to a subject that's not on the agenda?
Commissioners, I wish to call, McClark Sanders, 2096 Leland Way, Salina. I wish to call your attention today to a guidance that was issued by the Secretary of State this past Friday relative to mask-wearing at polling places. And the statement says in part, this is quoting Scott Schwab, "Our priority has been and continues to be ensuring every Kansan has the opportunity to exercise their right to vote in the 2020 elections. Voters who choose to vote in person will be allowed to vote regardless of whether or not they wear a mask. Exercising one's fundamental right to vote is not and should not be contingent upon whether or not they choose to wear a mask. Voter intimidation or suppression based on use or non-use of a face mask will not be tolerated and is subject to litigation," according to Secretary of State Scott Schwab. So my question is, I would like the Commission to consider putting voters going to and from a polling place on the list of exceptions for people who can't wear masks. I also specifically have questions about advance voting at the, here in the city-county building. As you know, advance voting is underway right now. What is the polling place? Is the polling place the building, or is the polling place the, just the county clerk's office? If the polling place is in fact the building, I believe that people should be allowed to enter the building for the specific purpose of going to the county clerk's office to cast a vote. If the voting location is merely the county clerk's office, they should be allowed to take their mask off while they're in the county clerk's office at the polling location. I think this is something that you need to address. I think that definitely you need to put it on your list of exceptions as to people who don't have to wear masks, that anybody involved in exercising their right to vote as directed by the Kansas Secretary of State is not required to wear a mask. And I would hope that you would take this seriously and address this in a manner that assures that we have free, open elections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laney Meyer, Salina, Kansas. I wasn't gonna bring this up today because it's about the mask and I know that's down the road, but after hearing that response, I wanted to say a quick story I read about a fellow named Richard Rose. He was a nine-year Army vet. He, he fought in Iraq and Afghanistan, and he was adamant, adamant about not having to wear masks. He was not gonna buy into that hype, and his words were much stronger than that. He was determined that he was an American citizen and he had rights to not do that. On July 1st, he was diagnosed with COVID. On July 4th, he died of COVID. He didn't get to celebrate because he was too adamant, too strong, couldn't use common sense, and was concerned, not concerned about not only himself but others around him. So when it comes time to take a look at that again, please remember this story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Freedom of speech, I've looked this up. There are at least two forms of freedom of speech. One of them is sign language, and that includes using your limbs, your arms. So to restrict these people when they are expressing their opinion, it is a form of speech. Even though they're using their arms, it is still freedom of speech. They're expressing themselves. To deny people to demonstrate in public freedom of speech, I think you're stepping on some constitutional rights. It's a form of communication. Another subject, this mass issue, mass issue. Are we a nation of laws? We have gotten to this point in time by obeying the laws as they are written. If you don't like the laws, you're gonna have to have them changed, but until then, you have to obey the laws. To ignore or to deny one's rights is unconstitutional. Even though errors have been made, no law, no crime has been committed. For someone to force, impose their emotions on an issue, emotions have no place in government. Government should not have any influence, any persuasion on any issue. Emotions have no place. This has been stated in the Constitution. An emotion issue, it shall be a separation, and I'm using this as an example, it shall be a separation of state and church. Religion is an emotional issue. To bring emotions into this question of mask is improper, it should not be allowed. Can we tie, or do you want me to wait, on item development business, 8-1 and 8-2? Do you want me to do it now, or would you, am I gonna be allowed?
There will be no comments during 8-1 or 8-2, so.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we'll put, I'm sorry, I was thinking 9-1, 9-2. Yep, we'll wait till we get to those then.
Okay, that's what I wanna know.
Sorry.
I wanted to clarify, change the rules.
Yep, haven't changed them on you yet, not planning on it. Okay, anyone else? Okay, with that, we will move into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 13, 2020. Item 6.2, approve resolution number 20-7846, appointing members to the Saline County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Do we have an item a Commissioner would like to remove from consent agenda? Not accept a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will lead us into Administration 7.1.
Item 7.1, resolution number 207849, authorizing the staff to submit an application on behalf of eligible local sub-agencies for the 2020 Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Program.
Is Ms. Driscoll around here? I saw her earlier.
I did too. I don't see her, but I can try to go ahead and get started. I think she may be on her way down from her office. As the staff reported, as you may recall, we've been a participant in the-
There she is.
Okay.
I'm trying to time that run through the hallway. As you have, before you have a resolution requesting the ability to apply the Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Program, we have been part of this program and receiving these federal dollars for about 20 years. And these dollars are used to help with homelessness, emergency rehousing, and have consistently been used by a handful of organizations in the community, particularly Catholic Charities most recently, D-VAC, and Ashby House. What you have before you this year is slightly different. As we've seen with other funding, the CARES Act that was passed by Congress has a lot of additional money in it that then was put into existing programs. So the Emergency Solutions Grant is one of those existing programs that got an influx of money. The way they are appropriating the money for this is that all organizations that received funding as allocated in 2019 will get a 200% increase for 2021, or 2020, 2021 year. And so, we have essentially been pre-approved for those funds. In the past, normally, organizations get together, they have to have matching funds, they say, this is how much we'd like, we submit that, and then we're awarded an amount that isn't necessarily how much we asked for. Often, it's less. So, in this case, we're knowing ahead of time that we've been guaranteed that funding. Essentially, we have to fill out the application form, bring forward those applying programs. We do get additional monies for administration. We've typically gotten somewhere between 5 and 7.5%. So, those monies are included in there. All three entities that participated last year are participating again this year and are able to use that additional 200% increase and can handle that additional money with the needs that are due to COVID and just the general needs of the program. Again, something that's different than this year, in addition to the additional monies, there is no match requirement. So, that is a, that's great for everybody. So, more money spent on those tasks that are needed. And then lastly, something that the Commission asked us to do last year was just to ensure that as many organizations as possible knew about these dollars was to do some type of outreach. It's not a requirement, there's nothing in the ESG grant program that says you must advertise, like with CDBG, or, you know, post something in the paper, or have, or hold a public hearing. In this case, though, we wanted to just make sure people knew about these dollars. And so your request last year, we worked with the state to get an extension on our deadline, and we did that. We put out a press release, we also advertised in the paper, and we advertised on social media, just letting organizations know that these dollars were available, here's how you could apply, and then created a website or a webpage under our featured items on the city's homepage that made the application materials available, gave more instruction, things like that. We did not get any additional requests from organizations. We did talk to a couple organizations that had been looking at it in the past, but like with all grants, there's, there's a cost-benefit analysis. Even if you can get the money, or it's even more money, do you have the people to administer it? Is it the right kind of fitting money? I mean, there's reporting quarterly that goes along with this and several other requirements. It's not ideal for all organizations. So we did not get any new applications from those efforts, but we, we did go through that, and I feel that was a very well-vetted process. One of the things the state explained to us is the preapproval money has essentially been set aside. If you imagine they got kind of a pile of money from the feds through the CARES Act, everybody who had been preapproved from 2019, those dollars were set aside. There is some additional monies that can be applied for. We've talked to a couple of our applicants to see if, if they'd like to go above and beyond that. I think at this point, they're good with the monies they have, and this is a lot to work with. The state did indicate that if all the monies are not spent through this first round of applications, that they're interested in kind of coming back out and seeing if we could, if maybe those programs are ready to expand. Just with everything going on, a lot of them are trying to kind of pace themselves and try and find some of their footing. So I think to go and say, hey, we'd like to expand something, is a little bit of a challenge. In addition to knowing this is probably one year's worth of extra funding, to go and expand a program or create something new, knowing you might not have that funding next year, gets a little complicated. Yes, I think with that, our request this evening then is for you to pass resolution 20-7849, and that would allow us to go forward and apply for the grant. Awarding of the grant and notification from the state is normally within three to four weeks. They seem to be moving quite quickly with this and are aware of, we've been in a lot of communication with them lately since these new CARES dollars have come forward. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just have a couple real quick. So, I wasn't quite sure I understood, the, the applications were not just restricted to the agencies that were fund recipients in 2019, i.e. a new agency could, could come in and request funding from this, but none chose to, to do so, correct?
Correct. So what the state said is, you, the city of Salina, got X amount of dollars.
Right.
You will get a 200% increase.
Right.
However you choose to divvy that up, is how you choose to divvy that up.
Okay. So the housing authority did not apply for any of these monies?
Yeah.
Okay. And as far as you know, like, within the individual applicants, there's nothing in there for, like, relief for individual tenants or landlords who have tenants that are behind on their payments or anything like that? This is more of a, just specifically directed toward homelessness, or that's, that's what our applicants for the funding have cho, I mean, that's, that's where they are?
So the very specific areas that this grant deals with is street outreach.
Okay.
So that's specifically people who are homeless and doing outreach to get them into some type of housing. The next is emergency shelter.
Right.
So that is, you know, there's a very specific definition related to what is an emergency in getting somebody into shelter. It is different than chronic homelessness, it is different than an individual seeking housing, there, it's a very particular definition. There is homeless prevention, and then rapid rehousing, and then also HIMSS, which is basically like a database management system for handling these types of, of housing. So whether you're trying to move people within a system, so it's basically like technical support is what the HIMSS is.
Okay.
So it is pretty specific of what you're trying to do with folks. So, that's one of the reasons, and one of the reasons Salina Housing Authority doesn't qualify, are several of its federal programs already are paid for by the feds, and you can't have that overlap between the Emergency Solutions Grant.
Okay.
Housing Authority is essentially more long-term.
Okay, so they, they wouldn't have any, like, like, they're being able to utilize rapid rehousing funding, would not, that would not be a good fit?
They already get some rapid rehousing dollars-
Okay.
-that are guaranteed for housing authorities.
Okay.
There has been some talk in the past about a couple agencies coming in together to try to do some of these programs to get a larger amount of money.
Right, right.
I think like many things in 2020, everybody's kind of trying to keep their heads above water, and at this point, known programs and being able to do, deal with the new need related to people maybe experiencing homeless, homelessness for the first time due to COVID and unemployment and some of those things that have been happening, it's probably not the best timing, and I think these agencies aren't necessarily ready to come together and start new programs or try and kind of pool those resources, because it takes a lot of coordination. And many of them operate at kind of-
Minimal.
Yeah, you only have so many people and they're trying to do a lot of things.
Right.
But we, I think the other thing is knowing that these are well-known federal dollars, it's kind of like CDBG. If you're in the housing world, you pretty much know ESG dollars and how to use them and when to use them. So I'm comfortable that majority of our nonprofits who are doing this work are aware of these dollars. A couple of them that haven't applied, that I called and talked with, their answer was, it's just not enough money for the amount of work it takes. And, and I, you know, I mean, that's, that's about a workload thing that only a director and those people leading those organizations can answer.
Right. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that, and I guess, I don't know if this is a question, a comment, or whatever, but in looking at these federal grants, whether it's the CDBG one, the COVID grant that we, we had a, a chance at earlier, or this one, is, I mean, do you think that our publication deadlines, such as they are with the Journal at this point, is creating a difficulty for our being able to complete and submit those applications in a timely fashion? Because we're having to, to wait until it can get in the Journal, and if so, what are our, what are our options going forward in terms of public notification? Because I, I'm seeing that we had to ask for an extension here, and I know that the, when the application was submitted for us by North Central Regional Planning Commission on the CDBG funds, we missed out on that because we applied too late because, you know, there were publication notifications that we had to comply with, and I guess it's frustrating when I see a town the size of Salina that's having difficulty getting things published when, you know, smaller communities are. So, is it, can we explore other, other official publication methods or getting something deemed an official publication method? I'm just, I'm a little frustrated.
Yeah, well, I can speak specifically to this grant. As I mentioned, there's no requirement in this that says thou shall publish. It's just, it's not a requirement. I mean, the fact that we are having this, this resolution is that public notification. But one of the things that you directed staff to last year was, make sure people know that these dollars are out here so that they can apply. And so, that's how we went and did that kind of extra step. Do I wish some things could go into the Journal a little bit faster? I mean, one of the challenges we're seeing is when we call over, they're already getting their layouts and stuff published, or sent to the publisher, and so, it's like a two or three-day lead time. On, on this in particular, since we didn't have to have it, the deadline extension is really related to the fact, and, and we've been seeing this, this is very typical emergencies. And honestly, ESG has always been kind of a tight turnaround. We'll get the application. We often get it in May, and we usually have to produce something by, you know, the next month. This was, we got notified on June 24th, I think, and we had to have complete applications gone through City Commission by the 1st of July. I don't care how often you publish, there's no way, like, that is a really tight turnaround time, and the state knew that. And when we specifically said, hey, we would like some extra time to make more people aware of this, and knowing that those preapproved dollars had already been set aside for us, they were accommodating and were supportive of that. And so, you know, tomorrow, we'll submit. Typically, when we submit this grant, just so everybody's aware, because I think it is different than the CDBG application process that we just went with, because we use North Central Regional Planning Commission, there's a lot of other moving pieces. For this, you know, what we do is we submit a complete digital copy via email, and then we submit the standard original copy plus three copies box, and we do certified mail, so we have a copy of that certified mail certificate. We also email that, and that's proof to the state will digitally answer mail that we've met their deadline. And heaven forbid something happens, I'll just drive the thing to Topeka if I have to, so, and we will get it there tomorrow.
Yes, for, yeah, I will drive to Topeka and deliver it myself for that, for those funding. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
I think I can add to that a little bit. I agree with Ms. Driscoll's comments that this particular instance, there was no publication requirement, it was voluntary on our part and they accommodated us. With respect to the North Central Regional Planning and the CDBG money, that's another example of things being a little bit different in 2020 in terms of the funding and the turnaround time, and they, they had a public phone call, but that turnaround time was pretty short. But, different programs have different requirements. In the case of CDBG, they're very formalized in terms of the publication requirements and where you can publish, and so, there's, you know, a publication of record means something to them, and the Salina Journal is pretty much the only thing at the moment. Haze, as an example, has chosen to do some of their required publication on their website, and I know that that's, they're getting pushback from the Kansas Press Association. So I think the conversation's starting about, you know, alternatives, and, and that's, boy, that's been a conversation for 20 years, in terms of just the cost and, and how cumbersome it can be to publish the, the official way. But, notice depends on the program, depends on the program requirements, and in the case of the CDBG, going in, we- In the, in the case of the CDBG, going in, we questioned whether small communities that with a weekly publication or, or that didn't meet very often would be able to meet the requirements. Then you throw Memorial Day into it, and that's what really kind of threw us a curve. So, we'll, we'll continue to use social media and our website as additional ways to get the word out, but in many instances, until something changes, the Salina Journal is a required element of publication.
Well, I did have a question about the deadline being tomorrow and what we were going to do to make sure that it actually gets there tomorrow. And I, I have a fundamental distrust of electronics in that regard, because some emails I get don't have the attachments attached. And so, I, I know things can go south. I'm glad you're thinking about some other way to get there. Tell me, if they received the copy of the certified mail receipt, would they consider, on the deadline date, would they consider that as meeting the deadline if it's in the mail at the right time?
Yes, yes, yes. And that's one of the reasons we do that.
Okay.
And, and because we have this kind of customized deadline, he, our, our, our contact at the state knows exactly what's happening today at this time and knows that that's why we're submitting tomorrow. So, yeah. I mean, and the fact that we're kind of, again, rare, but we're pre-approved for these dollars. So, what they're asking us to do is kind of essentially go through the motions, make sure we can justify our need, and then get that turnaround to them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? Any comments from the public? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 207849.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7849. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christkell. Good to have you back. 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 20-7850, expressing intent to apply for and accept funds from the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
All right. American Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager, I'm going to sit over here, because this is going to be a real short report. This is also in response to the CARES Act. The federal government allocated some money that would trickle down to local governments. Saline County has received $11 million in coronavirus relief funding. As part of the program, the state of Kansas required them to put together a little committee. It's called the Spark Committee, the Strengthening People and Revitalizing Kansas Committee, that is going to administer this grant for the county. And the Spark Committee has asked that we pass a resolution that basically just says we intend to submit for these funds and that we will follow all the guidelines when we receive them. Some of the things that the funds can be used for are things like overtime spent on COVID-19-related expenses, materials and installation for physical barriers that, to enforce social distancing, things like new technology that we use in order to do the online meetings or streaming or telework, salaries that were paid to staff who were on emergency paid sick leave, cleaning and disinfection supplies, that sort of thing, face masks, anything that can be used to prevent and that is directly related to COVID-19. So at this point, staff, the city staff's looking through all the things that we have that we think might be eligible for these funds. The Spark Committee has asked that we submit to them a list of those things this Friday. So the first step in this process is for us to pass a resolution that says that we intend to, to apply for these grant funds and that we'll use them. And then we will submit on Friday. The first round that they're looking at will be cities and schools. And then, after that, they'll determine how much money is spoken for in the first round, and they will open that up to, to a more broad audience. And there's some more information in the packet about some of those different funding opportunities for different organizations that would be outside of the city and school. So there's $11 million set aside for Saline County. There's, there's no matching funds for us. The only additional expense that, that might come out of this is there are some requirements for a single audit, depending on the amount of federal dollars that the city receives in a given year. And that is typically between $5,000 and $7,000 is that we would have to expend in order to do that audit. So your options today are to approve Resolution Number 207850, to disapprove it, or to approve it with amendments. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this, the first round is just expenses incurred to date. So we'll have an opportunity when it, when that round is concluded to apply for anticipated expenses through year end?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct.
And I guess, just so the public knows, this is expenses, this is not loss of income.
That's correct.
And also, when does the, the public library, are they, they don't, they're not falling under our, our umbrella? Do they apply later on then?
So after, after the 24th, I think the, this first round, the Spark Committee is just trying to figure out what it is or how much money the city and the county and the school are, are going to actually apply for. And then once they see how much money that is, then they'll open it up to a broader audience, and that would be like any other local government entity out there. And there's also some other social service organizations that would be eligible for funding as well. There's kind of a broad list of things that are eligible. But that's, I think the first step is, let's see what the schools and city and the county, how much money they think this is going to cost, see what's left over, and then open it up to a broader audience. This is all going to happen very quickly. They have to have the entire funding allocated by the, I think it's August 15th. So, so they're going to be moving pretty quickly to, to allocate the $11 million. Anything that they don't allocate has to go back to the state.
And Commissioners, I would tell you that we talked a little bit about the Airport Authority, the Housing Authority, and the Library Board are bodies that you appoint, and there's a little bit of a, a relationship with the city. But when you think about the accountability for the single audit and, and being accountable for both what's applied for and the expenditures of those funds, we didn't feel like there's enough direct linkage and oversight on the city's part to have them apply under umbrella and felt it more appropriate for them to apply on their own.
And that would be during the next round?
Correct.
Any other questions?
I guess my only other question, or maybe it would be more of a request, would be that when we do get to the, the next round, if there are funds available, if, whether it's the city of Salina or another agency that would give any kind of consideration for some mask distribution for people that can't afford masks? That's a question that I've gotten, you know, what to do for people who can't, who can't afford masks, don't have access to masks. So, I, I don't know.
We could certainly take that into consideration.
It's germane here, but maybe in the future, as funding allows, that might be something to at least keep in the back of your mind.
Any comments from the public? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back.
Can I add something?
Yes, please come up here.
Cheryl Harp, 821 Hancock Street, Salina. Would any of that be going to any nursing home workers or, I know that masks are really difficult for them, and I have few friends and family that work in that area, and they're having to use the same masks all the time. And I think that's a shame. But anyway, if any of that can be allocated for them, that would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I have an answer to that directly, but I'll, we could take it back to the committee for sure. I think there are some funds that are set aside for, that will be set aside for public health agencies and that sort of thing. So that, that is certainly a possibility, and we can take that to the Spark Committee for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 207850.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7850. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will move us into 7.3.
Item 7.3, Consider Additional Authorization to Complete the 2019 Mill and Inlay Project.
Mayor and Commissioners, Jim Kowatch, Public Works Director. We are finishing up some business from 2019. We originally awarded the contract to APAC Shears Division of Salina for a total of $1,500,000, and that included a $50,963 and 10 cent contingency. We came back to you last August and added some additional work, an emergency repair to the soccer field parking lots for a little over $150,000. And then at the very end of the year, in December, we had some remaining funds, and we wanted to allocate the $2,019 for the completion of the mill and inlay of Santa Fe from Crawford to Mulberry. We intentionally did not include that in the project last year because of all of the work downtown and the thought that downtown had suffered from enough construction for a while. So, yeah, we originally had hoped to maybe get that in last fall. That didn't happen because we were completing our, our other mill and inlay work. And as you remember, we had the pretty substantial curbing and milling and inlay project on 9th Street north of Crawford last year, which also finished up late in the year. So, we came back in December thinking that the $252,000 that we had requested of, to use up the rest of the 2019 mill and inlay money was adequate to do Santa Fe. As we did some more measuring and as we calculated the additional costs that we'd incurred in 2019 on some additional expenditures that were, were required, we found out that we were just a little bit short of being able to complete Santa Fe. So we intended to come back to you guys in March, and we were on the March 16th agenda to make sure that, that you were okay with the expenditures that we have listed here today and before we did the, the overlay work on Santa Fe. Because of COVID and because of the urgency to try to get Santa Fe completed early in the year, there again, trying to minimize the harm to downtown and the hospital, the work on Santa Fe was completed very, it was in April, first part of May is when they actually got in, milled it, and overlaid it in about a week's time. So it was, it was done very quickly. As you can see, some of the additional costs for last year, just to make sure, and we've, we've accepted input from you guys as well as the public, we're trying to do a better job of taking care of the projects as we go. So we incurred some additional expenses for the adjustment of manholes. We did have some patching we had to do on the soccer field that wasn't originally included in that estimate. And then we also, just to tie into the side streets and stuff, they calculated they used about $30,000 worth of additional asphalt just to smooth those approaches. So, when it's all said and done, we're about $31,000 or $31,320.40 over what we had originally authorized last year. And as you guys have seen, just in the, the budget, the gas tax and the sales taxes is a, for dedicated street projects is pretty substantial, and we believe we can pay for this out of the gas tax money for this year without substantially harming that project. Like I said, we originally intended to come to you before we did Santa Fe with this request, and with COVID and the stay-at-home orders, we weren't able to do that. So, this is kind of after the fact. It's $30,000 that, work that was necessary to get done to do, do an adequate job. So we are requesting you today to authorize the additional $31,320.40 to complete the 2019 mill and inlay project. You can authorize that with amendments, or you can postpone consideration, but ultimately, we will need to pay the contractor for the work that they've done. So, with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions, comments for staff?
Mr. Kowatch, I just wanted to make sure that, last year, we had the regrading of manholes and valves to create a smoother ride. Are we including those costs in the costs of projects for this year? So, once we get through a round of projects, we're not going to have to go back and contract for someone to come in and adjust the, the level of the manhole covers?
Yes. With the surfacing projects that we're doing now, and we are including the manhole adjustments as part of the project. As you know, we had a, a three-year backlog of projects where we had those that exceeded the expectations of the public. And actually, with the rain, they may not have gotten started, but the project that we led earlier this year, they're planning, we're, we're planning on starting this morning. So, doing additional manhole adjustments.
Okay. Okay, great. And the, like, the ongoing projects like Ohio, those will be taken care of as the project?
Yes, as it's completed.
As it's completed. Okay.
That was my question, because I know there's a couple on Ohio Street that are a little, little low still, so...
Yes, they're, they're included in part of the project, and we've got those included in the costs.
I know at one time those caught us by surprise. We weren't adding that in. Other questions? Any comments from the public? Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we authorize an additional $31,320.40 to complete City of Salina Project Number 90014, 2019 Mill and Inlay.
Second. Have a motion, second, authorize additional $31,320.40 to complete Project Number 90014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowatch. That leads us to 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 20-7842, adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region F Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll kick things off, Mayor and Commissioners, and Michelle Barkley with Saline County Emergency Management knows a lot more than I do about this topic, so I'll hand it off to her fairly quickly. But, as, as you know, we have a number of interlocal agreements between the city and the county, and one of the more interesting ones that catches my attention is we have a combined museum and emergency management agreement. And so the city, it addresses the city's responsibilities over the museum, and it delegates responsibility for emergency management to Saline County. So, Ms. Barkley is the Saline County Emergency, Emergency Management Director. She reached out to me asking that we endorse, or pass the resolution that's on your agenda, endorsing the Region F Hazard Mitigation Plan. The plan itself was 518 pages long. I took the liberty of not attaching the entire plan to your staff report, but I did include Section 2, which is the planning process. It details the planning process that was utilized in Region F. And if you took a look at that, you can see that it was fairly extensive. And then Ms. Barkley's here to speak in greater detail about the, the plan itself and the need for our adoption, and what that means for us at Saline County and the region. So I'll turn it over to Michelle.
So I'll just provide you guys a little background on mitigation in Ohio. It's basically to reduce the loss of life property and reduce the risk of some of the more prevalent hazards that we have identified in not only Saline County, but in the North Central Region of Kansas. So, our extensive mitigation effort, like the outdoor warning sirens that you see in Salina, is basically a long-term effect. We're trying to improve the well-being of the community through these efforts, much like the levee that you see in Salina and in Gypsum to help with the flooding. Unfortunately, that didn't really help them out in 2019, but we just, for most of the time, it was better. So, a little background is the Disaster Act of 2000 requires all political entities in the United States to have an approved hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plan process starts with the creation of the plan. Kansas outsourced this to Blue Umbrella, who we contracted to write the entire state's plans based on the regions. After that, the county then submits the plan for review. We submit it to FEMA. FEMA then approves it. They send it back down to us. We adopt the plan, and then we ask every entity listed in the plan to then adopt it as well. Adopting a plan basically opens you up for public assistance, which you guys participated in, in 2019 due to flooding. It can also open up public assistance for 2020 for the coronavirus, public assistance, which does not have an end date at this time. Every entity that participated in 2014 did again participate in 2019. There is no downfall. There is a 75% coverage for all reimbursements covered under public assistance. And then the state normally pushes in 10% of that expense. Is there any additional questions?
How often is this done?
Every four years.
Every four years. Okay. I was going to say, I don't remember addressing it while I've been on the commission, so I was curious.
So, Commissioners, as far as options, the ones that we identified for your consideration are kind of the typical slate of options. You could approve the resolution as presented. And I'd have to defer to Ms. Barkley a little bit about the implications of whether you choose to amend the resolution or, or not adopt the resolution. As one of many players in Region F, I don't know that I can tell you that you have full discretion without that having some consequences. So, if they chose not to adopt it, what would the impact be on the city and the county and the region?
There would be no impact on the region. There would be no impact on the region. It would just affect the City of Salina. You are not covered under, you will now be held liable for any loss of life due to flooding. You will not be available for any funding that you may be reimbursed for, any mitigation projects ideas, whether that be building a shelter in a school for tornadoes. All of that will come out of the city's pocket.
So, I'm not necessarily advocating that.
Yeah.
It is a slate of options we typically go through.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we wouldn't, so. Any other questions? If not, any public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution under 207842 as presented.
Second? Motion second to approve resolution number 20-7842. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you for being here. Okay, that leads us to 7.5.
Item 7.5, Sunflower Coalition Presentation.
Mayor and Commissioners, I've got a little bit of lead in and then we'll turn it over to the Sunflower Coalition representatives. But as you're well aware by now, national events have called attention on law enforcement activities, the George Floyd incident, probably the most high-profile or recent of those. And in response to that, you've had public comment at the podium as part of Citizens' Forum for a number of meetings. We conducted a forum at Sam's Chapel at Kansas Wesleyan University. And then on July 6th, staff provided you a report as a follow-up to the forum noting some options and that thing, decision points for you to consider. At that time, representatives of the Sunflower Coalition approached you and asked for an opportunity to meet with you in some format to present a proposal. We discussed kind of the open meetings, the impacts and, and different options, and you offered to them today's date to be on today's agenda and present to you their presentation. So, we've coordinated with them. You have a copy of what they provided last week in your packet. And then I think I noted in the staff report that previously the decision, some of the decision points we'd identified at the last meeting were, the staff had indicated that we could research further citizen review boards and formats, as well as bring to you a, a policy regarding use of surplus property or receipt of surplus property. Those options are still out there for your consideration. And then at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stanford to represent the Sunflower Coalition.
My name is Luke Stanford, and I'm resident of Salina, and I'll be presenting the Sunflower Coalition's policy proposal to you today. All right, so I want to start off by first just a disclaimer that these are not by any mean radical proposals, that there are precedent for these, and these are just proposals that will help keep the city safe, the police department safe, and most importantly, the citizens safe. And I also want to stress that this is not an end-all-be-all document. We're not going to try to pretend that we're policy experts or legal experts. We're just concerned citizens who took a lot of time out of our days and nights to put this together for you and identifying four principles that we hope that you adopt in whatever you do, which are transparency, oversight, demilitarization, and acting with a sense of urgency as much as you can. All right. And also, I just want to say, I'm not going to be going point by point through this, so I, we did our homework and I hope you did as well. So, let's begin by jumping into the LEAB and Reasons for Change. So, the LEAB is, its aspirations were good, but the implementation of it was far from what it was supposed to be. It was meant to protect us, but it falls far from that. And this is not an attack on any way on any of the individuals on the board or the police department in and of itself. It's just saying that this institution is not as good as it should be and is not what we should be accepting as our form of accountability. So, we identify four shortcomings in this LEAB, starting off with scope, authority, transparency, and finally, membership. So, when it comes to the scope, the LEAB, like we've said before, is only limited to racial discrimination cases. And while that is extremely important, we do believe that it should be expanded beyond just that and that it should be a broader accountability measure rather than just racial discrimination. The next step is an authority where it lacks the ability to actually take any action and it can only act in recommendations. And a, a government entity that acts in actual action on behalf of the people would be much more preferable to this current system. The next point, transparency. As we've mentioned many times before, this is not a city board, so it does not have, it is not in accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And whenever there's this lack of transparency, this just breeds a lack of trust, and a lack of trust breeds fear. And no one should be afraid of the police department because of just this lack of transparency here. And if we just address this issue, it can really put a lot of minds at ease and really bring us closer as a community and taking us to the next step. And the final part is just the membership. It's just that they should not have any conflicts of interest in any format when it comes to being on a board that's meant to protect the people. That's not saying that there are bad people, I've talked to some of them, and they're really good people, but it's just making sure that they are not put in a position where they have to be to either discipline someone that they care about or someone that they know or protecting a citizen. No one should be put in that position, and that's what we're advocating for here. And so, let's just jump right into the policy proposal. So, I'm going to be moving to, I believe, page, that is five, just jumping right into, starting off with the structure of it. So, like I mentioned earlier, the, instead of having an LEAB, what we're proposing is having a citizens review board. And also, we, that page, we just had echo pretty much the points I just said, so we're moving on to the next page. So, you have that one right there. Okay. So, what I was saying was this would be structured like any other board or commission in the City of Salina, where they have a five member, where they have five members, they have staff helping them out and a, just making sure that there's no conflict of interest and that they're in accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Next point I want to talk about is the functionality. So, we're going on to Section 2, starting off with policy recommendations. So, while a citizens review board is an inherently reactionary policy, we would like there to be some room for some proaction, so for some proactive action on this board and making sure that we just, if there's not any cases at the time, that we're reviewing, reviewing what policy we have currently, and we're just making sure it's up-to-date as possible and that they're making recommendations to the police chief if there's any room for change or just making sure that we're taking strides to be the best community that we can be. So, now we're moving on to Section 2, Point 2, investigative powers. So, we start off by saying that, just that the CRB will have the power to subpoena any documents that it needs or any resources that it needs in an investigation that they launch. And there is precedent for this in the HRC, but what we're saying here is that if there is, if the CRB decides that there is a misconduct that's so egregious that they need to launch their own internal investigation, they should have that power, and that's what we're stating here in this document. And then the next part, we, we feel that the CRB should also be a place where the four, the formal avenue for citizens to voice complaints, either through writing or through just talking to the review board in a public forum type format, just making sure that people know where they can go to feel safe and where they could talk to someone to field any complaints they may have and someone who will handle that and bring those to the proper avenues and making sure that everyone is safe, the police department, the city, and most importantly, again, the people. And then, and the final part is, we make, we stress that it's not just receiving from the citizens. It's, and the part that we want to stress here is that it's not going to be launching investigation after investigation after investigation, because we can all agree that'd be pretty expensive. How, how we envision it working is it will be working with IA, the internal investigations of the police, and they will be using a lot of those investigations to make their decisions. But if they feel that there's been something that's so egregious that they just need to launch their own investigation, then they have that power and that is just an institution that will keep us safe if necessary. But we don't really envision that this happens a lot. This is going to be really rare, especially given the professionalism of our police in So, I'm going to go on to the page six now. Going on to disciplinary power. So, what we're arguing here is that it should be a government entity that is appointed by the city commission, an elected government body that has the final say in what disciplinary measures should be taken in a use of force, in a use of force violation. We're not saying for every single disciplinary matter. We're just saying in the use of force where it's been decided that someone has stepped out of line and that there has to be some action taken, it should be a body that is made up of people appointed by people, appointed by members, elected by people, the commission basically, to make sure that there's no egregious actions being taken against them. And we also make sure to, we also make sure to show that the chief of police will be very involved in this process. There's not in any way trying to be dismissive of him or his experience. They're going to be taking his recommendation and they're going to be making sure they hear it in full authority of what he's saying and just making sure that they're taking, they're taking what he's saying very seriously and it's going to have a lot of weight in the decision-making process. And that, and if they do do something that, that the police chief decides is just against what he thinks should have happened, we do agree that he should have the power to say that that's not what should have happened and to bring this problem to the city commission or to some other entity to make sure that there is not any mistake made, because it's entirely possible there could be a mistake made by the board and that we might need to resolve it in another way. But another way we do tackle, do tackle these possible problems is by talking about using a pre-negotiated disciplinary matrix, matrices. And so, I'm not sure if the police department currently uses their own disciplinary matrices, but the, the CRB would have one that pretty much says in a blanket statement of what can and cannot happen. And we can launch into millions of hypotheticals, but what this really does is just say that just ideas, if you do this, then this might happen, just kind of a blanket procedures of what would happen in disciplinary measures. And then the next point is public education, so Point 4 in Section 2. So, what we're talking about, this really leads back into transparency and making sure that people know what's going on with this board. One of the problems that we had with the LEAB was just that it wasn't really transparent. Besides a couple of flyers it had online from a couple of years ago, there was just not a lot of information on that. And that, again, just makes a lack of trust and makes it hard to trust what's going on in the process. And so, by taking an active role in educating the people on what CRB is, with the role of the police, and just making sure that also that Police Chief Nelson, that his community policing plan is available to the people and that they know what that kind of looks like, just making sure that we're involving the people in the process, and so there's a lot more transparency than there currently is, and this would be a much better system than what we have right now. And then finally, I want to also stress the protection of the officer. Again, this is not, these aren't any radical proposals, but we want to make sure that every single individual is protected in this process, and there should not be any sort of witch hunts or anything like that going on with the police officers. They should have the right to a due process, and I'm not going to jump into any legality of that, because again, I'm not an expert. But we just need to make sure in whatever ordinance you do draft, that there is protection of the police officer during this process as well as protection of the people, which is the core principles of what we're founding this document on. And then I'm going to move to the Section 3 of criteria for a successful board, which is arguably part of the, one of the most important parts of this document. And I'm not going to go point by point through this one, but what this really puts forward is just what we would consider, what we'd like for you to consider and what we'd consider a successful board and what we consider success in Salina, and that if we go through these measures, everyone can be safe, the city, the police department, and most importantly, again, the people. And that these are something you should greatly consider in writing your own ordinance or strategic plan and making sure that we take the appropriate next step. And then we do mention the dissolution of the current law enforcement advisory board just because a lot of their duties are going to be overlapping with what the, our CRB will be doing. And with that, I'm going to be handing this off to Santiago to talk to you about the militarization of police in the 1033 program.
Santiago Vasquez, I live in Salina, Kansas. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure to just recap a little bit of what Luke said, that this review board has to function independently, will have the ability to enforce its own recommendations, launch its own investigations, be able to have access to information instead of waiting for the police to recommend certain things the way the current law enforcement advisory board does, and have the ultimate say in the way that we discipline our officers, obviously with the input of the police chief. But yeah, so now moving on to the militarization of the police and the 1033 program. They have the document up. It's page eight, if you have it in front of you. But it's important that we talk about the way that militarization has been affecting our police departments across the nation, but also within Salina, Kansas. I mean, I'm pretty sure we're all aware of the way that militarization and access to military equipment has had a negative impact, not just on the image of the police department, but also on the way that police departments around the country are treating their citizens. We have seen excessive uses of force and egregious uses of violent actions against citizen, against citizens using the equipment that is available to them through the 1033 program. But once again, the, the scope of this is not just the 1033 program, but militarization in general. We should not be allowing the police department to have access to any sort of military equipment because it simply is not needed, especially when there is no oversight on what they are allowed to get at all. I mean, we have already seen that the police department has acquired weapons in the past and have, had no one check what they are getting, simply because it doesn't meet the $20,000 limit for what would have to be checked in the first place. There needs to be some sort of public accountability on that. But once again, the Sunflower Coalition stands that it's not just accountability, that they should not have access to that equipment at all. Now, here's what we currently have access to. We have access to surplus military equipment. And as we've seen in the past, we've used this to get rifles, we've used this to get the APC, the armored personnel carrier, and that is really bad for a number of reasons. First of all, this sort of equipment has hurt people in the past. I know that we've, that we've acquired a grenade launcher that was returned last year. And in conversation with, with some of the department, I asked, you know, what did we need a grenade launcher for? Because obviously, we are not launching grenades. And when we were doing some review, it's, it's more than likely that this grenade launcher would probably be used for things like tear gas, specifically, specifically allowed to use OC, or what we would commonly call as pepper spray. The problem with that is that in comparison to other departments who use things like CS or CN, OC specifically does damage the respiratory system and is used because of that, because it incapacitates people. But obviously, that presents a huge risk to the individuals who are breathing in that gas. The fact that we were even able to acquire such a thing and, and were cleared to use this sort, this sort of weaponry is already immediately concerning. Whenever in Salina, would we actually need such crowd control to have a grenade launcher? I mean, it makes no sense. Additionally, the, all the equipment that we've had before, we've returned. Not only does this go to point to the fact that the equipment they are giving us is really bad and shouldn't be accepted anyway, especially when the taxpayers have to pay for the transportation costs, the maintenance costs of it afterwards, and then when they're, when they're poor quality, we have to pay for them to be sent back as well. But additionally, it goes to show to the fact that Salina is a safe community and has a strong policing program, not because they have military equipment, but because of their professionalism. They didn't need it in the first place. The APC has gotten very little use in, in, in more than just like, what would we say, like just public stunts, you know, being in parades, having it, you know, come out on Halloween. Salina is not a community that is safe because the police have access to military equipment. It is safe because of the citizens within Salina, as well as the professionalism of the police department. If they can send back all those weapons, it just goes to show that we don't need them in the first place. There is no reason for you to reject an all-out ban on 1033. Additionally, at the very least, it presents a public image issue for the police department. The fact that we are getting this, this sort of equipment with no oversight at all, the fact that we are parading around an eight-ton vehicle that supposedly has a psychological factor on the people who see it, that obviously points to the fact that people see this sort of equipment and have a negative perception of the police department. When you have a negative perception of the police department, people are less likely to cooperate with them, and it actually hurts the ability for the police to do their duties. Because if the police, because if the community sees them as a threat and treat them as a threat, that puts officers at risk. What we should be looking for is to create a better public image and a better relationship between officers and citizens. That way, that, that way, we decrease the risk of violence between both parties. It benefits both of them. Yeah, so ultimately, there's no justification for having access to this sort of equipment. If you want to look at some more specific equipment in the proposal section on page nine, in subsection B, we talk specifically about some of the equipment that was outlined in a bill that was recently passed in Montana, which includes things like rifled, armored or weapon, rifles, armored or weaponized drones, aircraft, aircraft, grenades, surveillance technologies, silencers, militarized armored vehicles, or other such military equipment through any other means, right? This once again goes, points to the fact that it's not just through 1033 that we get access to this equipment, but through a lot of different avenues. I know that Chief Nelson pointed out in his, at the public forum, that in Ferguson, the armored personnel carriers and the armored vehicles that they had there were not acquired through 1033, they were acquired through other means. So, we cannot stop at simply banning 1033. We also have to limit access to military equipment from any other avenue as well. And, yeah, I mean, he himself pointed out the fact that bringing out this sort of equipment towards a peaceful protest or just in general has a negative impact on the way that people perceive the police. It's an all-around bad thing. Additionally, if you look at the citations we have, I believe, in the militarization and effectiveness, the facts section of this, of this proposal on page eight, a study in Maryland found that specifically having armored personnel carriers, I mean, on top of just military equipment, actually has a negative impact on, on public perception. At the very worst, it hurts the public perception and the ability to interact with the public, and it statistically does not provide any real benefits of protection to the police departments. You can go ahead and read that yourself too, if you want to. I mean, you have access to all the research that we have. So, ultimately, what statistics have found, which the very few statistics that are around on militarization in the first place, is that having access to things through 1033 doesn't actually present a significant increase to the safety of officers, and we can go ahead and look at our own community for that as well. It's very little that we use things like the armored personnel carrier. It's very little that we use things like the armored personnel carrier and we don't even, and we send back most of our equipment. So if there is no actual benefit to the safety of the officers, we don't need it, and we are getting a negative public perception at the very least to the police department, then what is the point of having the 1033 program around? Ultimately, these are the questions that I pause it to you, and the TSC advocates that we should have an all-out ban on access to this sort of military equipment. So yeah, I know that I have only about two and a half minutes left, and we would like to answer some questions if you have them before we open up to the public forum, because then things are going to get a little more congested. If there's anything specifically that we can answer, we would really like to answer those questions right now.
I don't know if all of these are questions, but just comments, and some of these are devil's advocate comments. In revamping the review board, as I read through this, some of these suggested new duties go beyond obviously review and advising and helping set policy. When we get into the area of authority, punitive action, personnel actions, and the ability to come to the city commission going around the police chief, that sounds more like what I think in a large city would be an elected police commission, which has much broader duties than...
Well, yeah. And I mean, that's kind of what we were talking about.
Which is a little different from a review board, and the devil's advocate question I'm just throwing out is, which model are you proposing?
So, and someone fact-checked me on this as well, but I believe that the review board in Newton and a few other places have the ability to overstep the police chief if they ignore a recommendation that is made. And that goes a long way in also making sure that the review board has an actual enforcement mechanism. Because if we look at the current law advisory board, they can make a recommendation or advise the police to do something, but they have no way of ensuring that that is listened to. So by giving the CRB actual ability to enforce its recommendation, it gives them the power to actually be an enforcement mechanism.
Is that an elected board or an appointed board?
I mean, I think we outline it that we say that...
In Newton.
Yeah, we say that it would be, it would function in the same way that we have developed other boards in the past within the city. So it would fall under the purview of the city government. But once again, that is where y'all would step in to make sure that we are following the proper channels. We would assume that in developing this board, it would be done in the same way we've developed other boards like the HRC and other commissions within the city government.
Exactly. For those, hate to use the word powers, but when it is power, we might have to specify the background of some of the people on that...
Which, yeah, which we would expect all of you to do, right? Because we presented you like a set of guidelines for what an appropriate and effective board would be, and we expect the city commission, who are the experts on this sort of policy, to fill in the gaps there while following those guidelines.
Right. And as far as the conflict of interest, you can't, particularly in a small city, eliminate all potential conflicts of interest.
Yeah, but I assume that there is a vetting process, correct?
We have rules that govern what has to happen if there is a perceived or a real conflict of interest. And I say that only so that someone who happens to be related to a police officer is not automatically excluded.
Yeah, I mean...
Because then you end up creating a body which the police will consider unresponsive, insensitive to their needs. Because you have two clients, we have civilians, we have our police officers. So it's got to be perceived as a fair body from both sides.
And I guess where we stand on that is that having a family member on, you know, if someone on the board has a family member, they're obviously put in a position where they have a conflict of interest, right? Because at some point in time...
For that officer.
I mean, not necessarily even for, I mean, like, just why would we ever put someone in a position where they have to choose between a family member and protecting a citizen, right? The fact that that avenue is even available...
Their conflict would be for that officer.
I mean, I guess we could also say that there is a bias, I guess, in favor of law enforcement if you have someone on the advisory, I mean, like, a person on the advisory board who has a family member. But additionally, that goes down to the vetting processes that we already use in order to get people into commissions. I mean, I assume that there is one, right? And we can all agree that there needs to be some sort of vetting process for the LEAB. And once again, we never claim to be specific, like, to have a specific, right, like, this is what we will do step by step, because we are not legal experts. We just know that there is a current, there are current conflicts of interest on the LEAB that we all understand. Those need to be addressed in a future citizens' review board if it's going to be effective.
Yeah, I'm just throwing these out as thoughts that I just need to think of and may need to be reviewed again. Now, some of those conflicts were perceived economic conflicts. There was only one instance of an actual family member conflict.
Yeah, I mean, those conflicts are also tangible as well, right? If you're raising private funds for the police department, you also have a vested interest in the department as well. We would see that that is probably another pretty big conflict of interest as well.
Could be. But I mean, I agree with you as far as the economic part, but, you know, there are different persuasions, different reasons for raising funds. I mean, again, I'm just throwing these devil's advocate out. As far as the 1033 program, what's your opinion on simply instituting oversight of any requested equipment? And I can't tell you right now what might be available that we might need, but militarization is as much attitude, because you can be militaristic with a badge and a billy club. You don't need a grenade launcher to be militaristic. So a lot of it is attitude and training. The chief explained why we have the APC. We don't use it often. And do we have data, or have you reviewed data on when we have actually used it here in action?
I believe we do. If someone could get me access to that, I would appreciate it. But like, in response to that, I would say that, one, right, we can't, like, obviously there is a cultural aspect to the way that policing has developed and become militarized, but there's only so much that a policy can do to create cultural change, right? So what we can do is ban access, or at least greatly limit access to the stuff that they can use, because we would all agree that a militarized personality with military equipment is worse than just a militarized personality.
As an example, let's just say the military is getting rid of flak jackets, bulletproof vests, and assuming they're still good, would that be beyond the bounds of this type of policy to accept those?
I guess, I mean...
If we could get them for next to nothing as opposed to buying them new?
I mean, in that response, like, in this hypothetical situation, I would say that, one, we have had no problem in getting those flak jackets through other means in the first place. Two, we could probably point to the fact that historically, the kind of equipment that we're getting from the military is used or in bad shape, so there's no way of ensuring that whatever we are buying secondhand is going to be appropriate. And three, in a...
I'm saying, if it's in good shape and it's free.
Do we have a way of actually ensuring that's in good shape? Because as far as I understand...
We're not getting... Yeah, that's so far down beyond, I mean, assuming the person's in good shape.
Ultimately, the benefits of not having access to that equipment outweigh the possibility that we might be able to get flak jackets for cheap. It's just like, you know, you've got to weigh those things there, right? I would, I mean, I think the Sunflower Coalition stands on the ground that the benefits of banning, the usage of 1033 and militarization would greatly outweigh any of the possible negative consequences of maybe not having access to a flak jacket. I think that's a pretty logical line of reasoning to follow.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on the hot seat next. I don't think that I have any questions per se, because here's how I received your proposal. It's basically that it is a proposal based on a lot of research that you all have done, that the Sunflower Coalition has done over the last several weeks. And I personally, one, I appreciate you taking this task on, because I think that as we look, as we review the law enforcement advisory board, I think that, especially in your references, which some of them I did look up and they were very, it was very interesting material, I think that you've given us a place to start and some topics that, as Commissioner Davis has shown, you know, that we're going to need to, you know, deliberate as a governing body. But overall, I really want to express my appreciation for you taking this on. And other than that, I don't really want, at this point, I don't want to get into specifics about, I like this element, but I don't like this element. I just really appreciate having this information consolidated and presented so succinctly. So thank you very much.
No questions really. I guess I don't see in your references who the Sunflower Coalition is. Is there a membership list for all of you? And where did you come about the expertise for this subject matter?
Yeah, so we stand on a platform that we do not reveal the personal information of our membership, simply for their own safety, and that's the will of the membership as well. I can tell you that there are currently at least 30 active members. That is as much as I can give in personal, in like, just like as personal information. Where the Sunflower Coalition stands, it is a group of community members. We've taken the time to do our research, we presented the research to you, so you have access to everything that we did as well. I know that we have some people who have experience, either on the collegiate level of being able to look at policy and write, which greatly helped us improve the quality of the information that we are providing to you. But once again, we don't claim to be the legal expert, because the legal experts are the attorneys and the city commission, which is why we presented a set of guidelines that it seems other communities are already following and that would, or that are interested in following. And so on that front, I think that we can make a pretty solid case in favor of things, especially when we have empirics on our side, as well as all of our information and the research that we've done recently.
So you are a secret society.
I mean, if you want to call us that, that's really cool. I mean, I would love to say that the Sunflower Coalition is a really dope, secret society and that we're all conniving in the background. But I mean, you're, we're a bunch of average Joes. Like, we just happen to have enough time to stay up until five in the morning to write out a policy proposal.
Well, I think you've done great work, and I appreciate the effort that you all have made as well. And from my point of view, I hope we can pass this to the staff, the city managers, and then have them make recommendations about the usefulness of the different points you're making. But thank you.
I really don't have any specific comments. I mean, your proposal is clear and understandable. I'm going to reserve judgment on a lot of it until I can see what comes from the staff, and we can kind of work the thing comprehensively at that time. So, and again, I do appreciate the work. It does, it does take some time, and we acknowledge that. Thanks.
Before we open it up for public comment, again, I think this is material that gives us a good platform to start with. I think there's some things, as I go through here, that I look at as far as legality, you know, things, what can we and can we not do. We need to look at, again, our main goal here is we're going to, among the five of us, if we all looked at this policy and chose what we want and what we didn't want, we'd have five different policies. So what we do as a commission is we'll staff, we'll ask staff to work on several things. And again, it will be a compromise of these, of the five individuals up here. Our goal up here is to protect the 50,000 people that live in Salina. So that's our number one. My number two goal, and this is my goal, is that every police officer goes home every evening safe to his family. So some of the things you've talked about, we could sit here and go back and forth about, but that's one of the things that's important to me. We'll get staff started on this. I'm not sure exactly how, you know, how we're going to do that. We may have to do that in a study session, or maybe we put, send notes to staff. I don't know exactly how we want to address this.
My personal, if you're asking for opinions on that. I think the study session affords us the greatest opportunity to have free, open, back-and-forth conversation. I think after, we all came in here with some ideas, obviously, and we're going to get more ideas from public comment. And I'm the type of person who likes to just let it simmer for a little bit and then...
You're a simmerer and I'm a rusher.
And I'm going to be between both of you.
I was going to say. But something I don't want to be lost in all of this is the sense of urgency and the fact that you all have put a lot of effort into this, and I think you've highlighted some issues that we have within the board, and you've proposed solutions, which a lot, it's very easy for someone to sit back and say, oh, it's not good because of this and that and the other thing. And I think we, you know, I know I have a tendency to do that. But you did offer us your proposal, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that you guys have been coming and to meeting after meeting, because it, I mean, I just don't want this to, you know, to get lost, and especially you all may lose some momentum if you have a lot of members that are going to college and you're not going to be in the community. I would just, you know, I think we need to deliberate and we need to discuss, but I also think that we need to do something to ensure that we keep the process moving forward.
Mayor Hoppick, if I might make a procedural suggestion, I would like for us to open the floor for public comment pro or con, and then proceed to have a commission discussion after that point, after we've heard, had a chance to hear from others who might want to speak to the issue.
Fine, okay.
And ultimately, right, we just want to ensure that this proposal is out there, that we've lined what criteria we believe makes for a decent board, and that those criteria are at the very least taken into account with whatever board is proposed ultimately by the city commission or by, you know, the city manager. That's essentially the function of this proposal, is you must keep these things in mind to ensure that the future board does not make the same mistakes that the previous board did. But yeah, thank you so much.
I'm not going to argue, I'm not sure the previous board made any mistakes, they were working under the guidelines they were given.
I mean, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up with that to public comment. And again, we have three minutes. Come to the podium, please give your name and address.
My name is Jack Henenkamp, I live at 3155 West Crawford. I want to first thank the city commission, city of Salina, for having this topic advanced to be in the city commission agenda and allowing the opportunity for public comment. I also want to state my respect for the Sunflower Coalition. It is no small task to take the time and effort necessary regardless of one's position on a subject to submit those positions formally for consideration. The issue of law enforcement and race relations in the national environment today has certainly become high-profile, with sometimes thoughtful and other times acerbic positions taken by those that see themselves as stakeholders. But it is clearly one of great importance and broader than the specific TS items that are even included today in our discussion. It's a very broad issue. As a citizen of Salina and Saline County, having sound law enforcement, employing good and fair practices for the safety and security of the citizens of the community at reasonable cost is important to me, and I think to all citizens. While that statement sounds simple enough, the details of such a definition and how that outcome might be best achieved is not necessarily commonly seen the same by the general public. And that's where we come to, we need to resolve those in places such as the city commission and these forums. The Sunflower Coalition has provided a proposal here today representing at least a portion of what they believe would achieve that. Upon reviewing the proposal and in listening to the statements by TSC today, I would have the following comment, comments. Starting first with the aspect of the TSC document proposing banning access to the federal 1033 program by Salina and Saline County law enforcement. Nationally, there are both proponents and opponents of law enforcement participation in the federal 1033 program. The TSC, do you mind if I call the TSC for abbreviation? The TSC presents the position of opponent, and I disagree with that position, and would encourage the city commission and the city of Salina to not give favorable consideration to banning access to the 1033 program. It only makes sound economic sense when participation in that program can be physically prudent source of relevant materials and equipment that adds value to law enforcement, response and operations and protection of citizens and the law enforcement officers. Your example of the flak vest is a good one. I see when you can get something like that at low cost that would perform, do that. Why shut off an avenue that can be beneficial to the taxpayer as well as to all of the citizens and the police officers? citizens and police officers? I think the armored personnel carrier is one excellent example of a tool that achieves that objective. It is not used often, but it is a tool that in that rare situation, when protection of police officers and citizens can best be accomplished by that particular vehicle, it is good to have it on hand for the cost and investment we have in it. Would I recommend a tank? Absolutely not. If Chief Nelson came for that, why, he would not find much in the way of support. Some unfavorably cite the militaristic nature of 1033 purchases. Most of those that would be reasonably acquired by law enforcement are available in civilian versions, but at much higher cost, with increased burden on the taxpayer. I don't think that's the direction to go to when you have a program that can do that. Failure to allow the avenue of an economically sensible 1033 acquisition that would avoid, would aid in providing added value, and protection for Salina citizens and law enforcement is not sound physical management.
About another 30 seconds or so. Sorry.
Okay. You know, I have quite a bit more, as I spend a lot of time on this, so, Mike, I can appreciate that. I'd be glad to simply give this, I present it down and hand it out, send it to you guys, so you can have that review.
Sorry, I don't mean to be rude to anybody, but if everybody goes an extra three or five minutes, I gotta be fair to everybody, so.
I want to give everybody the opportunity. I may just add, and close off on there, and send this forward to you, I'd be glad to do that.
You can sure do that.
Close off. Related to the LEAB and CRB, that's a much more complex issue, so, I'll just send that to you as well. Thank you for the opportunity to present this amount.
Thank you.
Next?
Dalton McDowell, 514 South Ninth. What the coalition has said is, would work. I am not forgetting, doing away with the Bearcat, or the armored personnel carrier, because it has so many other uses than a SWAT vehicle. Last year in the flooding in Nebraska, the Nebraska State Patrol deployed all their armored personnel carriers to rescue people, that their vehicles could not get to it, and it was too shallow to put a boat in. HP also has Bearcats, and they use them all the time. I don't see, if we already have the asset, why get rid of it? Because if we'd ever have to get a new one, I'm looking right here. The Orlando Police Department was looking at one, and they had a price range of 230,000 up to 1 million plus for an APC if they had ever have to get a brand-new one. I can see where some of the militaristic stuff would not work, like a tank, but APCs are so versatile, you can use them on many different levels, just not SWAT action. And it protects law enforcement when they go into a hot zone with active shooting, with the bullet-resistant materials that the APCs are made out of. That's all I have, commissioners.
Thank you, Dalton. Next?
Miranda Bachman, here in Salina on Fifth Street. Salina needs to cut their losses now. If I've learned anything being a single mother, it's the red flags in a relationship. The Salina Department's fundamental relationship with the 1033 program is a toxic one at best. The police department cannot be trusted by militarized weapons, simply because the command staff suggests so. The fact that the Salina Police Department was able to purchase an armored car with no approval says enough. Now, the city has to store it, and is forced to pay with any upkeep. Sounds like an unstable loan my ex had, I mistakenly co-signed for. Learn the lesson and sell back the armored vehicle. Re-budget and upkeep the parking space to cut our losses now. Instead, we can finance racial profiling classes and buy another cop streetcar if needed. Ideally, we can save the money, something that the City of Salina or the Police Department is not so great at. They have an unsupervised budget, and it's unnecessary. Any cap for militarized weapons is too much. Logistically speaking, somehow the purchase of a $200,000 vehicle was made for a 5K with no indication from anyone, not the Salina citizens, not the commissioners, and it sure wasn't approved by the advisory board. What else can we do, what else can we buy under a minimal cap, a lot? Like assault rifles that will never be used, or maybe a shooting dummy for 12 grand. So, we ask, what if the cap is changed, and we have more rules imposed? I can answer you with one simple answer. There are always loops and ropes around them, obviously. Furthermore, private donations are obtained by the Police Department. If the citizens of Salina truly believe that we need militarized weapons, we could finance them. Instead, they are purchased without taxpayers' knowledge and direct disregard for public safety and city regulations. Salina citizens don't deserve that. The City of Salina doesn't need an armored vehicle nor assault rifles, which have never been used, other than in training. We should not keep adjusting to the surprises the Police Department has acquired, nor should we allow them to keep acquiring militarized weapons. The city commission is already being asked to create a new advisory board. I will continue questioning the excellence fund and examining the lack of funding in our taxpaying programs. At least relieve the city of the many burdens the 1033 program creates by tossing the hanging, rotting fruit, and tell Salina we won't have to fear our police officers every day, but relay that back to the Police Department. If our officers wonder why they fear their work every day, it's because their department is making purchases as if they are going to war. Every day, a cop goes to work knowing he has a gun, a mace, cameras, equipment, and sanctified immunity. Most people being pulled over have none of these. Police departments do not need assault rifles or armored cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. Next?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, my name is Joel Weimer, CNW Ranch, Smollin, Kansas. I'm the chairman, and the proud, and a proud member of the Salina-Celine County Law Enforcement Advisory Board, and I have been a member eight of the past 13 years since its inception. I'm also a proud member of the Salina Police Department Excellence Fund Board, and have been since its inception. The charge has been repeatedly leveled at me personally, at the past three city commission meetings, that I could not possibly be able to fairly serve at the same time on a board that critiques the Salina Police Department and its policing, and also be on a board that supports the Salina Police Department and its lawful policing. I take great exception to all the citizenry that have leveled these charges at me. This implies that I am personally just not intelligent enough and flexible enough to appreciate and support good, honest police and policing, and still be critical of bad police and police tactics. I'm sorry, folks. This just does, it just does not take any level of genius for a normal, right-minded, thinking person. I have observed, and would like to stress, that in the past three commission meetings, the citizenry, most especially the Sunshine Coalition Group, the young debate scholars' presentations have been extremely eloquent, and have expressed their ideas very articulately. It strikes me that these eloquent expressions of ideas are all completely left-leaning politically and minimally researched, and all completely negative when it comes to the Salina Police Department and its personnel and policing tactics. I do seriously give you all an A+ for your articulation, but wish you had taken a little more time to get your facts straight. And you have to understand that this is not Minneapolis. This is not Atlanta. This is not Seattle, Chicago, or New York City. This is hometown Salina, Kansas, population less than 50,000 residents. I'm very interested in your proposal, the Sunshine Coalition, to replace the existing law enforcement advisory board with the potential citizens review board. As citizens on the law enforcement advisory board, we've learned a great deal about our city and county policing over the past 13 years. Most importantly, we have learned a lot of the complexities of our policing.
Another 30 seconds, if we could, Mr. Weimer.
You folks need to realize that the existing law enforcement advisory board has volunteered countless hours over the years at 7:00 in the morning. I'm very interested to know how you would plan to form and fund a complex board that you're, with such an extensive scope that you're presenting. You also need to realize that the law enforcement advisory board has absolutely no reason to distrust the chief of police, the sheriff, and there aren't internal affairs experts who review each case via body cam. They know, they see what goes on.
Okay, I need to wrap it up, please. I'm sorry.
These people are all professionals at what they do. This kind of trust that I was talking about is what makes a citizens board work. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
My name is Teresa Hernandez, 640 East Iron, here in Salina. Thank you, Joel. I also served on the law enforcement advisory board. I was vice president from 2015 to 2017, and I fully agree with Joel that we can trust our local law enforcement officials. I do, though, have some differences of opinion regarding how the board members are selected, identified, and placed on the committee. So, if you'll excuse me just a second, I would like to propose that the way of identifying members for the board is more democratic and more transparent. So, I would recommend that the committee members are nominated by their respective minority communities, not from within the committee. I would like to propose that the committee members are then publicly identified. One of the aspects that I experienced when I was on the board, I'm bilingual in Spanish, and so, once the Spanish-speaking community began to know that I was on this committee, they began to surface not formal complaints. And so, I was a contact person, they would contact me, and start asking questions about how do we address this legal issue with law enforcement? And so, I was then able to direct them to the formal complaint process, say that it's in Spanish, this is where you can go, and you can access it and get. Now, none of those actually became formal complaints, but the minority community trusted that I was their representative, and then was able to, we were able to move forward and see if that's really what they wanted to do, and just facilitate that. So, if the committee members are publicly identified, then that would facilitate surfacing of complaints. The complaints themselves can be raised via the website, a phone call, or the committee member. Right now, we don't, I finished serving my term in December of 2019, so up until that point, committee members were not surfacing complaints. In 2017, there were zero complaints. So, there are very few complaints in my tenure with the board, and I'll just leave it at that. There were very few complaints. I would like to recommend that committee, that the committee be able to review all complaints that have a, that would affect the minority population, not just the ones that are exonerated or sustained. I believe that--
Another 30 seconds or so, please.
Thank you. I believe that if we, as the board, can review that, we will get a sense of what is acceptable and what is not acceptable, how to judge some of those decisions. And my last point, if conflicting opinions remain between the chief of police, law enforcement, and the committee, that the case be sent to the KBI, other law enforcement to be able to put some input. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have a lot to say for everybody, but if I have to cut you off, because we're trying to be fair to everybody, you can sure email us at the commission, if, I'll just let everybody know that, so.
Thank you.
Was it Teresa?
Yes, Teresa Hernandez.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't, I want to be sure of your name. Thank you, Teresa.
Mr. Mayor, I remembered this one. I'm Carol Reed, and 417 Venus, Salina. And I've not been real active, my husband was ill for a couple of years. Anyway, I've just kind of been getting acquainted with a lot of the things going on in the community, get back into it. But I was wondering if these young people did such a beautiful job, and I commend them also in their presentation, but I was wanting to ask if they have met with the chief of police.
Have you both met?
Yes.
You have to come up to the podium, or at the mayor's, sir.
We haven't met with him yet, but we were actually making plans to meet with him soon to get his thoughts on our policy proposal, and involve them more in this process.
Okay, so, I might have a couple more questions.
Please, you need to sneak into the microphone, and I want to hear you.
I might have a couple more questions. Well, I think communication is really good, and I think the young people, too, you know, with, as far as military, my husband was a Vietnam vet, but as far as the military equipment, I think it's real important for the young people to understand why you would order something, or why you would use it, or why is it being purchased? And maybe just some communication, or some meetings with them, to understand what the equipment that's needed would be needed for. And just like we saw in New York, when they didn't have ventilators, how many people died with this COVID because they were not prepared? You know, I know we're not in Salina, we don't need to have tons of military equipment, but, you know, I think we should have some preparation. There are some pretty crazy things going on around the world at this time, so, in my opinion, just from my input, I would like to see the young people meet with the recommendation that they meet with the advisory board, as well as the chief of police, and get some input, and some more understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Norman Ladd, Salina. Are you going to set a timeline on having, doing a study on this? Are we going to see results in 30 days, 90 days? That would be a discussion up to the commission, but move forward, but don't take too long.
Sandra Beverley, 141 South Clark Street. I've been sitting here today, listening to everything that's being said, and while the accolades are pouring for what these young people and their energy have produced, I feel angry that someone would be so upset that the idea of the way this system is set up is not justifiable to everybody. I'm sorry that Mr. Henningcamp feels like he's been attacked for the last three weeks, but this is not Minnesota. We know this, it's not Minneapolis. We know this is not Florida. We know this is not St. Louis. This is Salina, Kansas, and we are capable of better than what we have. That's all we're asking for. Nobody's asking for anybody to feel like they've been attacked. Nobody's asking for anybody to feel like they haven't done their job. What we're asking for is decency. And you cannot sit on a board and be in charge of judgment of something concerning that entity that you're supposed to be judging over. It doesn't work. I was an investigator in the city government for years, and I tell you what, the two directors that I worked under would have never let me cross the lines of appearing to even be on the side of something wrong. You just don't do it. And there's no shame in it. There's nothing to be upset about. You just don't do it. If it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, damn it, it's a duck. Get it over with.
Gonna ask rules of procedures here, there, there's no clapping or booing, either one, so if we could just move through that. Next.
Just for the record, Ms. Beverley?
Yes.
Were you referring to Mr. Wymer as opposed to Mr. Henning Camp?
I'm sorry, yes.
Just so that-
I did not give it to you.
We could get the clerk to maybe-
And yes, I apologize for being upset, but you know what? This is really tiring. This is not a rocket science that these people are asking for, and it doesn't take a whole lot to see that there's something wrong.
Next, anybody else?
Mayor Commissioners, City of Voice, I'm Carolyn Peterson, 2052 Leland Way. My presentation is very short. I again applaud the Sunflower Coalition for their hard work. I'm, I'm kind of surprised, I want to see an author on there who, who wrote that, Carl, I agree with you. And I'm, I'm disappointed that these young people feel that there's a threat for what they're representing and that they're not willing to stand up and be recognized and have to feel like they have to be behind a curtain. That, that is, that is concerning to me and also for Salina. I will say we're remiss if boards and committees are not reviewed occasionally because changes may mean, may need to be made, but not always. And are there concrete facts that Dean, the Law Enforcement Advisory Board, has been ineffective? The first blush of the proposal is that leadership of the PD will have no power, which is, should be very concerning to everyone. Sorry. Salina Police Department is an outstanding example of a well-run organization, constantly reviewing policies and procedures and being proactive. I would remind the commission that a successful business model is committees recommend, but management makes the decision, and that's in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next.
My name is Zia Markov. I live here in Salina, Kansas, and I would actually like to make one quick statement on behalf of the fact that the police department has actually left one case that's been cold for quite a while. My Aunt Gina was murdered, I believe in 1995 or 1998, and the case has been, remained cold because when investigating the situation, a lot of information essentially was, for the most part, un, like, look, we investigated the situation, excuse me, I'm looking at my thoughts collected here, and it's just kind of remained shut. She was murdered, and they got the information that they could, and they didn't go any further. So my family had actually hired a investigator, private investigator, onto the subject. He approached the police department here in town, and they were unwilling to give out any information as pointed to the situation. So to this day, we have no real solid conclusion as to what happened to my Aunt Gina when she was murdered. So I do think that a citizen review board of the police department would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bart Allen, Salina, Kansas, 3399 East Crawford. As many of you might be aware, I've written a book about the incompetence and the lack of transparency in Salina, Kansas, and it would be nice if I didn't have to write another book about it. It'd be nice if you took some of the advice of these young men here, because I am a case study in the lack of transparency of the police department in this town. I would advise you to read my book. I sell thousands of copies, and I'd like to quit dragging you all through the mud, but I do it every day, and I will continue to do it every day until I see a change or something, so I would take these young guys' advice. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Robert Beaster, I live in Salina, Kansas. I'm part of the Sunflower Coalition, and one of the things that kind of seems to be asked a lot is our membership and our general knowledge of our group, and the reason why we don't do that is for safety and for the fact that it can come back to hurt us. As one of the board members of the Salina Excellence Fund and of the review board came up, if he knew what we were saying and what we were doing, he would be able to spread that information around, not directly, but just passively doing it. Another thing that I'd like to say is that we aren't asking for much, we're just asking for the board that's claiming to be a citizen review board actually be looked at by the citizens, by the citizens of Salina, that it be democratically ran, that it is, that we are able to see inside when they are the ones that are claiming to be having our best interests at heart. He, he, I think he left. The board member did bring up how would we fund this. I don't know if this would bring additional funding for it since there's more tasks that it's having to manage, but if we are willing to pay money on outdated, on damaged military equipment, then I think we should be able to actually fund things that we are trying, that is claiming to help our community. If we are paying for things that will actually hurt our community literally, then it's money not well spent, especially when it's our, when it's the community's money that is going into these things, when it's our tax dollars, when we are paying millions of dollars for these APCs, for these assault rifles, for these flak jackets, and we are not paying anything back to the community. Thank you.
I've already made my blanket argument today, but I just wanted to say, oh, Luke Stanford, President of Salina, but I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of the policy that we put forth, and it's not perfect by any means, but we never claimed it to be. And I would also just like to say that I'm very proud for the citizen engagement that's been brought apart by this, and that we have a very wide spectrum of views when it comes to our policy, and that we're all engaging in this process and making sure that Salina looks like the place we want it to look like in the future. And I just hope that you take all these views into, into your decision-making process and make the best decision for our community going forward, and making sure that you keep in mind the Salina of 2040. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Santiago, well, let's let some other people, you guys have already, we got other people, and we're not-
My name is Jerry Ivy, Salina, Kansas. In regards to the, the board, I'd like to say that Chief Nelson's doing a fine job. I don't think there needs to be a new board that works around him to tell him what to do. As far as the 1033 military equipment, I think our officers need to be equipped with the most protection possible so that they can go home at night. As many of you know, my dad was one that didn't make it home at night, that night, and I felt like if he would have been better equipped, then maybe he would be here with us today. So it's something that I advocate, anything that can help them, that'll help our police defend themselves. They're not out in the military. The line in their proposal said that the citizens of Salina do not want to militarize forced. I don't know that the Sunflower Coalition can speak for the citizens of Salina. I, as a citizen of Salina, first of all, don't see it as a militarized force, but if they need to do what they need to do, then you have it. One thing that the Sunflower Coalition also brings up with the fundraising and the Excellency Board, one of the first fundraisers that I can recall that was done privately and through the police department was John Woody, who was the chief of police at the time, and my grandpa, John Burgess. They raised funds for bulletproof vests, because at the time, my dad did not have bulletproof vests. They privately raised those funds, got them on the police, police officers at the time to protect them. I'm deeply offended when you say that, maybe we don't need a flak jacket, maybe one officer doesn't get that flak jacket today. Is he the one that's not supposed to come home that day? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sarah George, Salina, Kansas. I'd like to start by saying the Sunflower Coalition doesn't speak for this citizen of Salina. This citizen not only wants but expects the Salina Police Department to have available to them the best in training and equipment, whether that training and equipment is acquired through approved city-funded expenditures, or the more budget-friendly options of the 1033 program, or private donations. A quick review of the current news on any given day should highlight to anyone here the dangers of having a poorly funded, poorly trained, or ill-equipped police department. While the members of the Sunflower Coalition have a very strong drive to make a difference, and that's obvious, I feel it's important that people with a true knowledge of the training and equipment used and needed in policing our community are the ones making those decisions. As to the recommendation to disband the current advisory board, of the overt, just a quick Google search, I'm sure I'll be corrected online multiple times, of the current 18,000 active police departments in the United States, Salina is one of fewer than 10% that currently have a citizen review board of any type, showing in my opinion that we're clearly ahead of the game nationally. After having attended or viewed the past several city commission meetings, might I humbly suggest that the city of Salina right now clearly has more on its plate than it can handle? And adding the task of setting up and overseeing a new board is something best not tackled now. This citizen of Salina is asking you to wholeheartedly support and publicly back the Salina Police Department. And something not written on here, I am a member of the Salina Police Department Excellence Fund. You've got my name. It's not being hidden. In fact, it's on several forms. To the best of my knowledge, we haven't hidden with any of our donations or funds being raised or used for. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, Phil Black, 815 Spruce in Salina. Just a couple of quick points. One, the review board is not under your control at all, as I understand it. Is that correct? So it isn't as though you can make decisions for it, it's established from a separate entity. Second, in terms of an advisory board, there seems to be this idea that would cost a lot of money, or if it's like any of our other boards, that citizens serve for free, and the only cost would be the staff time to be involved in it. And as far as the Sunflower Coalition, they're like any other citizens group. I, I support them, I think they've done a great job, but their research, I think, is sound. So I don't think that we're asking to defund the police in terms of getting rid of it or making them unsafe. It's a matter of addressing also the, the causes that have gone into the, the problems of policing and not making the police entirely responsible for everything. But this seems to me to be a good start, having citizens, and citizens could apply, and you guys could make a determination of that. So it doesn't seem that complicated to me, but I think there's a lot of misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Joe Hay, 109 Baker Street. You know, I sat in those chairs for two years. I don't think a lot of people know how hard it is to get volunteers to sit on any type of a committee or any type of a board. We beg, and we beg, and we beg for volunteers to sit on boards. Chief Nelson and his group are doing an excellent job. In the two years I was up there, I heard, I heard no complaints. We need to take a look, just like Jerry said, we need to make sure that our police officers have got the tools, and whatever they need, at the end of that day, they, they go home to their families. That's the least that we can do. Again, I want to thank Chief Nelson and the rest of the Salina Police Department for the job they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Liz Johnson, resident of Salina. I wanted to talk about the review board that the Sunflower Coalition is proposing, and how it is not, we are not saying Chief Nelson is doing a bad job, we are saying that the problems that are occurring in America and that we are talking about right now are systemic. They're not just because of, like, one person doing a bad job, they're, they're integrated into the system, and they have been for a really long time. I want every police officer to go home safe, but I also want the citizens that they interact with to go home safe. I want the people who are poor and desperate, and the people who are addicted, to go home safe. I, I want them to have the materials that they need. Why do we talk so much about how much we give the police officers, and we don't talk about how much we give the citizens and the oppressed and the poor? And that's, it's exactly what someone said in the city forum, we need to fund first defenses first, and I know that's a long-term goal. I know that's something that's not going to happen right now, but it's something we need to keep in mind as an end goal, not just funding the last defense, not just funding the police, but funding the people that prevent, funding the things that prevent the police from being needed, from, from having to put themselves in danger. Just, I would like to keep in mind the long-term goal and the things, the reason that people are so angry about this, we're, we're talking about human lives, and we're talking about the citizens of Salina, and we're talking about systemic oppression, and that's why people are, are upset about this and are wanting change, and that's what's driving us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Alinea Scolmelo, and I reside in Salina, Kansas. First off, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the Sunflower Coalition that has been, kind of being brought to light. So we were formed in about early June of this year in response to the egregious murder of George Floyd, and so I would like to read our mission statement to those who are listening, because there have been questions about, like, this is like a hate group, and we've been acquitted with other hate groups, so here's our mission statement. The Sunflower Coalition was created by a group of individuals horrified by the extrajudicial killing of George Floyd, who also understand that his death is a product of the much larger issue of police brutality and discrimination. For far too long, we've seen victims forgotten, no rituals, no protests, just an obituary. We recognize the problems of the nation, are the problems of our community as well. It is because of that we are committed to tangible policy reform in Salina, specifically around the use of force/de-militarization, measures of public accountability, and reallocation of resources. So that's our mission statement, and if you want to take a look at that, our social media is for more information, both on Instagram, Facebook, and TikTok, is the Sunflower Coalition. So about our members, as we said before, we don't have, like, a list of every member in the coalition because of safety reasons, but we are community members from all ages, races, just you can name it, we, we are pretty diverse. And we research on our own, we don't accept any donations, private, public, none, we don't have any, well, we don't accept them. And we don't, we also do not discriminate against any members within the coalition, you know, we have members of all ages, sexualities, genders, ethnicities, yeah, we don't discriminate. As long as you are supporting our mission statement and what we want to do, then we gladly accept those individuals as members. And, you know, we're not exactly the secret group. We have stood up to previous meetings here with the commission on previous events. In fact, I believe we've been coming here for about a little bit over a month, so we are not some, like, mysterious force working in Salina. We are fellow community members with no private interest besides of the fact of just trying to improve our community. And if you want more information, again, as I've said, our social media handles, I don't know why I'm pointing this way, if I have them here, but again, the Sunflower Coalition on Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, Twitter, but there's not much on Twitter either. And if you have any questions, you can approach me, or any, like Santiago and Luke afterwards about any questions about the coalition, you know, because I'm pretty sure there's more, but we'd be gladly to answer those. Thank you.
Santiago's turn.
Once again, Santiago Vasquez, from Salina, Kansas. Yeah, so, I mean, we've heard a lot of arguments on both sides for what- Yeah, so we've heard a lot of arguments on both sides for what the police need to do forward. Once again, we will continue defending the proposal that we've put out and say that this is a good stepping forward point. Obviously, we don't have worked out every single little like nitty-gritty bit of the policy proposal, and we don't expect to, because that is what the legal professionals are for. But we do advocate that Salina deserves better than the bare minimum. And this is something that we agree on even with some of the members, or previous members of the Law Enforcement Advisory Board. They talk about how, I mean, like, we appreciate that they are volunteers, and they spent a lot of hours early in the morning to review things, but we understand that some of the problem, like, that doesn't take away from the fact that the problems in the current Law Enforcement Advisory Board is that they don't have the power to enforce the recommendations. They don't have the ability to actually cause change, and they rely on the police department to provide them what they need to review. This means that they cannot take proactive measures to get, to make a better change. As one of the members pointed out, people look to these sorts of review boards as avenues to be able to file their complaints, and it's something that the public needs in order to have transparency. And that's the goal of this proposal, is to create a bridge between the community and the police department through the CRB. They talk about how we need democratically elected members. We agree wholeheartedly. That is included within the proposal. They talk about the ability to have the board facilitate complaints. Once again, that is in our proposal. They said that the committee should be able to review all complaints. That is something that is also in the proposal, that the new CRB should have access to all of those things. On a fundamental level, we agree, and we also have to take into account that the current Law Enforcement Advisory Board simply is not completing that mission, that the future Law Enforcement Advisory Board can and should continue to do better and better. Next, we talk about the 1033 program, and people say like that we need the best training and equipment. And to that I respond, the 1033 program is not providing that, considering that Chief Nelson said that most of the equipment they get isn't of high quality, and we end up having to pay the shipping costs to return those. If we really want the best equipment, we should be willing to do that in a measure that isn't through militarization and a measure that can be held publicly accountable, instead of one that provides with poor equipment and with zero public accountability. The public should know what kind of weapons and armaments the police have access to. We should be making sure that we are also creating a better public image for the police department, because that helps them return safely home at night. When we don't perceive the police as a threat, that is the best thing for both sides of the community. This is something that I really want to stress, because it seems like we are in opposition. We are not. We want to ensure that the community is better and that everybody can be safe and feel safe, whether that be officer or citizen. And ultimately, the Coalition has done, I think, a good job of presenting its research and showing why we can have a say in this argument.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the Commission. We're not, first of all, I'll let the public know, we're not making any decisions tonight. There's no policy decision is going to be made, so.
Just to question the city attorney before we discuss, since this is not a city-appointed board, so to speak, is it even ours to change, or would we have to create a whole new board? Because it's, I would assume, Saline County, even if we could pull city membership out, the county would still have that same board existing.
Commissioner, I would suggest that if there is to be a change at all, the changes that occurred in the statute anticipate governing body action as far as the formulation of whatever that, whatever form that might take. So I would expect that if there were to be change, it would need to be coming from the governing body.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, if I may, I don't mean to jump in, Commissioner Davis, but the Law Enforcement Advisory Board, then, I would assume would, unless the county took action, otherwise would still be a board under county supervision, then? Or, I mean, I understand that we have the authority to establish a different board, but, and maybe that's not even a concern at this point.
If it helps at all, I think that was formed under the leadership of the chief of police, but in collaboration with the sheriff at the time. So to say what our action might be and what the county's reaction to that might be is a little hard at this point, but I think in terms of the point made, the message heard, I think your conversation can be what you would like to see, and then we can staff you through how we get there.
If I might, I did do a little bit of preparation, and I'll just read the statement, because I'll do a lot better job reading it than I will trying to recite it from memory. I'd like to thank all the volunteers who have served and currently serve on the Law Enforcement Advisory Board, created in 2007 under the auspices of the police chief and sheriff at the time. Thirteen years later, expectations have changed with regard to that board's role and structure. The city manager, I believe several weeks ago, was charged with developing and bringing to the city commission a proposal that addresses current expectations regarding a board's role, transparency, and accountability. My primary objective, I can't speak for these guys, but I'll speak for myself, is to create a board that first provides fair and impartial oversight and review of citizen complaints and internal investigations conducted by the police department in a transparent and timely manner. Second, they protect and respect the constitutional rights of citizens as well as police personnel, including the right to privacy. Third, they promote credibility for the process. Fourth, provides for the safety of police personnel and citizens, as well as the community at large. Fifth, enhances community trust and confidence in the department. Sixth, recognizes and improves the quality of service. Seventh, preserves and supports the ability of the city manager, the chief of police, and the department command structure to effectively manage the department within the confines of budgetary authorization, personnel policies, purchasing policies, and the department general orders. Eighth, supports our dedicated police officers, who work very hard in tough circumstances to provide for community safety. Ninth, stays within the confines of state and federal statutes, court decisions, including COMA and CORA. You know, that's going to be a tough road to walk. There's a heck of a balancing act here. I find nothing in the Coalition proposal particularly surprising. I do appreciate them presenting a written proposal, much of which may be incorporated into a final staff proposal for commission consideration. There's an abundance of literature on the topic, describing and analyzing multiple models, each of which has its own advantages and disadvantages. The common factor that I've been able to discern is there's a lot of disagreement about how to best proceed on this issue. The proposals presented omit significant detail, and I think they acknowledge that, necessary to incorporate into a staff proposal. Each detail represents decision points for the city commission. Baker's dozen of quick examples. Size of the board, the quorum, required qualifications for members, disqualifying factors, board composition and terms, are the community organization representatives included? Do we include a human relations commission representation on this board? Ex-official members, if so, who? Is there police department rank-and-file representation on the board? City staff assignments, deputy city manager, human relations director, perhaps assigned to help with the system. Fiscal implications, board member training, schedule of reporting requirements and to whom, and the scope of work. And there's probably a lot more. I developed that list in about five minutes of thinking about it. I look forward to a staff proposal incorporating appropriate elements of the Sunflower Coalition proposal, along with the best practices from the body of professional and academic research. Now, I'm going to step off my script here at this point. I'm through with it. But I want to say that at home, I didn't bring it today because I can't carry that many binders, but I've got a three-inch binder completely full of literature talking about this issue, and I'm ready to start a second one. I wish I could say I had read the entire thing in depth. I made it through about two-thirds, three-fourths of it. So there's lots of information out there to work from, and unfortunately, much of it is conflicting. People just have different opinions about what works, and what works in one community may not work in another. So we can look at another community as an example, but it would be a dire mistake to try to fit that on Salina's situation without modifying it to meet our particular needs. Anyway, Mayor, that's my opinion at this point.
Very well put. Thank you.
Got one to read, too, whenever you want to turn me loose.
Go ahead.
All right. First of all, I just want to acknowledge that every person engaged in this process brings a different perspective. And let's continue, first of all, to listen to each other carefully and respectfully, and I think we've seen, for the most part, a lot of that today, to find ways to improve interactions between law enforcement and citizens, working together, working collaboratively, compiling best practices, and thinking outside traditional constraints. And that's a big one. It's all very well and good to look at best practices, but I hope we have a process that also will inspire us to look outside what other communities have done. But doing all of those things, I really think that we can achieve great things, specifically to the Salina Police Department. I'd just like to say that as professionals who take pride in your work, it would be natural for you to resist engaging with citizens about their vision for community policing in Salina. It would be natural for you to be defensive and uncooperative, but you haven't been, and I appreciate your willingness to work with citizens from every area of the community. There was a recent column by the founder of the Forensic Psychological Associates that does our psychological screening for our law enforcement officers. The opinion piece was in the Kansas City Star, and in it, he does talk about the duality and the conflicting roles that police officers are forced to assume. So I think it's interesting that law enforcement as a profession is recognizing some of the things that we've heard about today. To the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Board members, to your members, past and present, you might feel as if you or your work is under attack, but it is not. Please know that I appreciate your time and your passion, and you're working to try to make a difference, because ultimately, that's what it's all about. You're there because you're trying to make a difference. Things have changed a lot since the Law Enforcement Advisory Board was founded in 2005, and I just want to make it clear that we need to acknowledge that the parameters for the board when it was founded, how those parameters have evolved, and what we expect from that board or a similar board in the future are not one and the same thing. So I just want to express my gratitude for the past service. To the contributors of the Police Excellence Fund, we all recognize that there's a funding gap. Thank you for recognizing that that funding gap exists, and thank you for your generosity in trying to bridge that gap. All the people who have written the commission, but particularly the following, and I hate to call out specific individuals, but some of you put a great deal of heart and soul and footnotes, which I do appreciate, and I just want to thank specifically Carolyn Peterson, James Tally, Andrew Couch, Bryce Jones, I may mispronounce this name, Stephen Pappy, and the speakers at the Kansas Wesley Forum. Because between all of those different sources, I feel like we're getting a real feel for how we're going to need to move forward, and I want to thank you all to cluing me into the Not in Our Town program, to people who sent links to Camden, New Jersey, and Flint, Michigan, and Arlington, Texas, the document on 21st Century Policing, which, like Commissioner France, I'm assembling quite a notebook. It's going to provide me with a lot of homework, and to Miranda Bachman, who kind of all got this all going with her initial activism following George Floyd's murder. And finally, I would like to thank members of the Sunflower Coalition. I was operating in complete ignorance about the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Board. I knew about the Excellence Fund. Heck, I've been to the events hosted by the Excellence Fund. I've contributed to the Excellence Fund. And I did not, I did not realize that we had a Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Board. And I just want to let you know that I appreciate the work you've done. I kind of look at you as 21st century reformers, and I thank you at least for taking an initial stab at making suggestions for things that you'd like to see change, and it's my hope that we can come back to this in the next few weeks, and if there's a consensus among the governing body, to keep this conversation moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodges. Okay, that still leads us to, where do we go from here? Study sessions, I know we're.
We've got budget behind this, so.
What's that?
We have budget almost behind this, so study sessions are starting to open up. And I think study session's probably the best format for staff to be able to report out to you. We're going to need a little bit of time to digest this and look at information, so as much as I understand the urgency, if we're going to provide you a quality product and amongst everything else we're doing, we're going to need a little bit of time. But I think.
So if I get you drift, it's not going to be next week?
No. No. We, you know, we've kind of taken this a step at a time, putting the form together and reporting back out of the form, and then identifying some options for you, working with the Sunflower Coalition. We've yet to, and waiting on their proposal. In terms of having an opportunity to take a look at it, I think we now have a starting point for staff to start trying to staff this through for you.
Commissioner, could I just add a few more suggestions? I think Commissioner France summed up, you know, very well-written bullet points to certainly address. The one that I would want to see included in the discussion is if the scope of this, we'll say, a new entity would be more of a true review board or function as an actual police commission. Because some of these suggested activities would probably have personnel ramifications and define certain chains of command. So I think we're looking at two potentially different bodies, depending on the nature of the body. That would also affect membership, conflicts of interest, temporary, I mean, transparency and fairness, and oversight of the Police Excellence Fund donations. Those types of groups are not unique. I mean, the Arts and Humanities Foundation supports the work of our Arts and Humanities Board. You know, so there's a place, but there's also a place for oversight of what our department receives or how it interacts with boards like that. As far as the militarization, it's probably not, it won't be a foundation for this, but I think it's as much as deals with attitude as it does action and the training, repeated training, citizen input into what we want our police force to look like, will influence to what degree our force functions in a militaristic fashion. And I think if we just focus on finding the bigger circle that the most number of ideas can fit in, we'll be fine. I was at a KU public management class for a year, and so I was with people from all different counties in the state. And believe it or not, Saline County and Salina in particular is held as one of the beacon cities in the state. Folks really look up to what happens in Salina. And I just know the backgrounds of you two, that you're USD 305 products. I'm sure the other school districts are represented in the group, but you're a shining example of why people should be envious of Salina. So thank you for the work and getting the ball rolling.
Okay, well, we'll wait to hear from staff, and there's no action to take at this time, so should we?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Scragg, what's your sense of a reasonable timeline to accommodate what you feel like staff needs to do a month?
I was going to say, I think 45 days would be pressing for us, just in terms of everything else that's going. else that's going on, and to really bring you back a thorough presentation.
So that would bring us to early September?
Um...
Yeah. This is mid-July, so...
Come back in a study session format at that time?
Yes. Okay, it's 6:30. Why don't we take a five-minute break? That'll give everyone a chance to clear out, and then we'll be able to come back here and get started with development business. Thank you, everyone, for your input. Okay.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 207847, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with Dagney's Ice Cream LLC, authoring the placement and construction of an outdoor sidewalk dining area on the sidewalk in front of Dagney's Ice Cream at 105 East Iron Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Andrew. And before we get started on about anybody else but mine, we're kind of mixed in with each other.
I apologize for the mix-up. I understand that your Martinelli's attachments were attached to Dagney's and vice versa. And we simply got them out of order as which was which on the agenda. But if they're stapled, I really apologize, because then you have to take them apart. But if you want to take a moment to get the right attachments with the right item, back in 2014, this commission approved an ordinance and a resolution, and those items amended our Chapter 5 alcohol code and our Chapter 35 right-of-way code. And the purpose of that was to allow for sidewalk and plaza areas to be used for outdoor dining, and also to allow the consumption of alcoholic beverages through the approval of a sidewalk cafe license agreement. Those were, ordinances were later clarified in 2018 with some cleanup amendments based on experience we had with the very first applications. Since its inception, there have been licensed agreements approved with Old Chicago at 214 South Santa Fe. They have not taken any steps to develop that. What they have in front of their building is on their own property, and they've not yet developed anything on the sidewalk at that location. Blue Sky Brewery, where they have put their fencing material up, but not yet utilized that area. You approved a license agreement to use part of Strand Plaza behind the Barolo Grill. And you approved a license agreement for a dining area in front of Yaya's and at Starbucks on South Santa Fe. This particular application was filed by Ken Stromberg on behalf of Dagney's Ice Cream. And once the application was determined to be complete, as you noticed, the Design Review Board is only currently meeting one time a month, and so they're meeting on the second Tuesday of each month. So June 11th was the first opportunity for them to review this application. And the location's the northeast corner of Santa Fe and Iron. And in 2016, the Strombergs remodeled a portion of the building they owned to create an ice cream parlor. And as part of that, they created a new entryway on the south side of the building facing Iron. And that is addressed as 105 East Iron. In 2017, they received approval to have a mobile, movable outdoor furniture permit to set two benches there. They now have come forward with a plan to place permanent customer seating on the public sidewalk in front of the building along Iron. This request is a little different, because they're proposing four picnic tables on the public sidewalk. They would be evenly distributed along the entire 120-foot frontage of the building, and so they won't all be directly in front of the ice cream shop. Three of the tables would seat four individuals, and one would be handicapped accessible. So they're proposing to place tables in four locations in front of the building. The tables are roughly seven by seven, would be round, and they would be located adjacent to the curb line. There's about 15 and 1/2 feet between the face of the building and the back of the Iron Avenue curb, and they plan to leave the benches in place. So they do plan to spread them out, and the westernmost table would be located west of an existing mailbox and landscape planter. The second table would be located between the east edge of the planter and a new trashcan. And then two of the tables would be located in front of the shop. There was some discussion at the Design Review Board and with the applicant about slightly shifting the location of the tables to the north. One of the changes that was made on Iron was formerly there was parallel parking. Now there's head-in parking, and so with head-in parking, you tend to have bumpers that hang over the curb. And so if you had a table right at the back of the curb, you might have conflict. So we've discussed that with the Strombergs, and they're open to a slight shifting to the north, just to keep it away from the curb and vehicle overhangs. There's no plan to serve alcoholic beverages, so they don't need any kind of barrier fence for their serving area. And at the Design Review Board meeting, they presented a proposal to install retractable umbrellas in the center of the tables. And the umbrellas they located are, they are wind-rated, and they are designed for outdoor use. Any umbrella in Kansas is going to be tested on certain days, but the one they have selected is the most durable that they could find. So at the June 11th Design Review Board meeting, that board voted four to zero to recommend to you that Dagney's Ice Cream application for sidewalk dining area in front of their shop be approved. And they made a number of findings in support of that. They didn't find that they would, the location would unreasonably impede pedestrian traffic, and they did think that the addition of this would increase activity level and vibrancy on this block of East Iron. So in terms of your action this evening, you could approve the attached resolution, which would authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Dagney's Ice Cream to allow the placement of sidewalk dining area in the public sidewalk in front of Dagney's Ice Cream. You could return this application to the Design Review Board for further consideration with a basis for returning it, or you could decline to approve the attached license agreement and provide further direction to the Strombergs and to staff. And we do have Ken Stromberg here, if you have any specific questions about their proposal. Again, what's different about this is that there's no fencing proposed, and the plan is to spread the tables out over the entire frontage, as you see indicated here. So the ice cream shop is here, but they're planning to spread the tables out along that frontage. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff?
Just to, is there enough sidewalk clearance between the benches that are already there and the table, new table and benches? There will be two little pinch points.
Yeah, because there's no, there's a pinch point here, but the tables would extend seven feet, and the benches about two. So there's going, and they're not going to be directly in front of each other. So there will be a path of travel there that will work. But the benches will remain.
And are, I'm sorry, are there any guidelines after the store is closed? Are those considered tables that anyone can sit on, or can the owners, I don't know if they do it, but say, do not sit here, and these are our tables?
Well, that might be a question for Mr. Bankston, but they're in the public right-of-way, and it's not, they're not going to take them inside at the end of the evening. So having placed them, I don't, unless they posted signs on them that no loitering or trespassing after hours or something like that, I don't, I don't know where it would be enforceable to keep others from just using it for their seating. And I don't, I don't know about the, that would be up to them to enforce the use of it when they're open, but when they're closed, they're going to be hard-pressed to limit who can sit there. I don't know about how, they would have a better idea if the benches are used. The benches have been there for several years, and I don't know how they're used or if they're used by persons that aren't frequenting the ice cream store, but the benches are there out all the time. So that might be a question for Mr. Bankston about the enforceability and how the benches are currently used. I would defer that to Mr. Stromberg.
Okay. Guess if they're sitting there, somebody has their, just sit down.
No, you covered my question in terms of just the clearance between, with the shift to the north. I just wanted to make sure that we still had adequate ADA.
Yeah, we're talking about, we're talking about six inches, six to seven inches of the, this actual bench here, just shifting slightly to the north. But this is the only planter that's in the block, and so we've got 16 feet from here to here.
With respect to after-hours use, regardless of the legal aspects, that probably represents some real practical difficulties, just in terms of perception and enforceability. So I think I kind of looked at the applicant first to see what their expectations were, but if there's an expectation that people are going to be precluded from using those, we may have to talk that through, and how that might actually be enforced.
One of the, one of the comments in the request for action talked about the anchor bolts, and there seemed to be some concern as to whether they could be anchored and disassembled without damaging the concrete. It's on about, it's on page five, under item number four.
Yes, yeah, he can answer that question. The bolts that he's proposing to use have been reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department and used in other locations. So he is, Mr. Stromberg has coordinated that with the Public Works Department about using bolts that they approve of, but I'll let him clarify that. So if there's no further questions, I'll let Ken add anything.
And Ken Stromberg, 2732 East Shipton Road, Salina, Kansas. Just a few clarifications. The stainless steel bolts, we worked with Dan Stack on those, and they're 316 stainless, so they're corrosion-resistant. They won't break down with chlorine or salts, so, and they can be ground off flush if we ever remove them. So that's the same fasteners they're using on the other fixtures downtown. So we want to make sure we use those. And as far as after-hours use, we're really, they're going to be there in the public right-of-way. If people want to sit there, we have no problem at all with that. Right now, a lot of our customers migrate to the corner now, to the current existing benches that are there, and we feel this will kind of, for one thing, ease the garbage burden that they leave in that area and get it back closer to our store. Because it is, we have noticed that they'll come in, especially with social distancing, they'll come in, they'll get their ice cream, and they'll go out and spread out around the corners around Iron and Santa Fe. So we're hoping this enhances that opportunity for our customers to have more space to go, maintain their distancing, and as well as enhances the downtown viability. As far as the distance and spacing, on the CAD drawing that I had up there, it's, we have plenty of space. We can move in almost a foot and still maintain the six-foot distance in all locations, so...
What's your plan for the umbrellas? One, do they stick out farther than the edge of the tables? And do you see them being up all the time, or are you going to take them up and down?
We're going to pull them down. When storms come, they're coming in. We don't want to find them a block away.
I presume you're going to bring them in every evening also?
Yeah, well, most likely we'll bring them in, just so they're not, we don't want them to become a problem or a hazard, especially in inclement weather, as we know we have here in town.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Thanks.
Any public comment?
Norman Mantle, Salina. Sometimes I guess you're in a place where you shouldn't be, but you get information that's very interesting. The problem is, where is it property, where is the property line? Private versus public? You cannot use public property for profit, because the taxpayers have paid taxes on this property. They will not receive any profit from this business that is conducting private business for profit. This happened two weeks ago, and one of your former commissioners, elected officials, he was there. He was involved in this. He was conducting a business for profit on public property. The state shut him down. So you're going to have to do a survey and see where the property line is. Private, public? And if you do it with a GPS system, the measurements will not match up with the information on your registered deeds. Because the surveys that was done here 50, 100, 200 years ago was the old chain method. When you do this survey and measuring with the chain method, you go up and down, you follow the contour of the land. Also, the chains, as they wear, they stretch. Each one of these chains consists of 10 rods, which is 16 and 1/2 feet per rod. As I said, the chain will wear, it gets longer, your measurements are not accurate. Now we use GPS. It's a straight line. So measurements, property lines, you're going to fight over property lines. People fight over property. They want that last inch. So that's, I'm just saying, look at that. Because our elected official, he got caught on public properties selling products for profit, and he got shut down. I sat there and watched it. I happened to be there.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments in the public?
Mayor, I move the City Commission, Approve Resolution Number 207847, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with Dagney Ice Cream LLC to allow the placement of a sidewalk dining area on the public sidewalk in front of Dagney's Ice Cream Shop at 105 East Iron Avenue.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution Number 20-7847. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. And before Mr. Stromberg leaves, I'd like to thank him and his wife, Dagney, for what they've done to that building. That building is just a wonderful asset, and so thank you guys for the money you've put into the exterior. It really looks nice, so just wanted to give you a little thank you for that, so... And I'm not sure why it's called Dagney's Ice Cream instead of Ken's Ice Cream, but we'll talk about that later, so... Okay, with, thank you.
We know who the boss is.
With that, we will move to 8.2.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 20-7848, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with DDR Concepts LLC, authoring the placement and construction of an outdoor sidewalk dining area on the sidewalk in front of Martinelli's Restaurant at 158 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Just to clarify, in regard to the previous comments, there was, there was no doubt about where the property line was in the case of Dagney's Ice Cream. The tables were in the public right-of-way, and the building, face of the building is the property line. So that is why we're bringing these matters for you, because... So that is why we're bringing these matters for you, because you are considering whether to authorize the use of that right-of-way. And this is also an application to place and construct outdoor dining on the public sidewalk in front of Martinelli's in the public right-of-way. This application is different, because there is a proposal to have the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages, and we appreciate their long patience, because they filed this application in March, and we were not able to get it in front of the Design Review Board until they started meeting again in June. So just wanted to clarify that in our sidewalk dining ordinance, you do have to have a food service component to have sidewalk dining. You can't be an alcohol-only venue and have sidewalk dining. So at least 30% of your gross sales receipts must be from food in order to have a sidewalk dining area. So this particular establishment, Martinelli's Little Italy, has operated in this location since 2001. The building is actually owned by Mr. Chuck Carroll. The restaurant operator is proposing to establish a roughly eight-foot by 25-foot fenced-in sidewalk dining area on the sidewalk in front of the building along South Santa Fe. And so in order to have permanent seating and also serve alcoholic beverages, the dining area must be enclosed or fenced in. This is a requirement of the Kansas Alcohol Beverage Control, and we're just carrying that out locally. And so the only mechanism by which that can happen is through a license agreement approved by the City Commission. So our dining area is about 7'9" in depth and 25'9" in total length. The dining area would contain four tables and 16 chairs. It's right at 200 square feet, which is the maximum allowable under our current ordinance. We went out to look at it. Staff identified that there was an existing light pole approximately four feet east of the northeast corner of the sidewalk dining area. And so in order to maintain the six-foot path of travel, the original plan went up to this edge right here, so they have shifted the dining area about three feet to the south, and that gets six foot of clearance between this corner and the light pole. They are proposing a three-foot-tall rod-style fence that would be black-colored aluminum that will serve as the perimeter barrier around the sidewalk dining area. They are proposing to use surface-mounted support brackets. The post-support brackets consist of a square plate that sits on top of the sidewalk, flush with the pavement, and is anchored with four masonry screws. This means that there's no large holes that are bored for that, and the plates just sit directly on the sidewalk. So that, instead of having a large hole that you would have with a large bracket, there are just four screw holes that would be removed should the fencing be removed. They are not proposing any umbrellas at this time, so it'll be the tables only. And they're proposing furniture that would be black powder-coated aluminum framing with the synthetic teak tops and seats for the chairs. They're not proposing any background music or unusual lighting or special canopies. And so the Design Review Board met on June 11th, 2020, and they voted 4 to 0 to recommend to you that Martinelli's application for a 200-square-foot sidewalk dining area in front of the restaurant be approved. And they found that if shifted south by three and a half feet, the proposed sidewalk dining area would comply with all applicable provisions of the Sidewalk Dining Ordinance and Administrative Regulations. And again, they found that this dining area would contribute to the welfare of the public by increasing the activity level and vibrancy on this block of South Santa Fe. And that will not cause injury to the value of other property and will not obstruct the walkway in the vicinity. So again, you have the same options. You could approve Resolution 207848. That would authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with DDR Concepts LLC, which is Tony Dong, to allow the placement of the sidewalk dining area. You could return this back to the Design Review Board for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for returning it, or you could decline to approve the agreement that's before you and provide further direction to the applicant and staff. I do believe we have Phil Black, who assisted with the actual submit of the application materials, and Tony Dong here. If you have any questions, staff would be open to any questions you have about this one. Good thing about this one is that this was a relatively clean area. There's not, there's the narrow planters at the corner and the one light pole, but other than that, it's a pretty open plaza area, so.
Any questions? Do we have any comments from anyone in the audience? Would Mr. Dong or Phil, would anybody like, if you would like to make a comment, you're more than welcome to. Okay. Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 207848, authorizing the mayor to execute a Sidewalk Cafe license agreement with DDR Concepts LLC, Tony Dong, to allow the placement of a sidewalk dining area on the public sidewalk in front of Martinelli's at 158 South Santa Fe.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7848. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. And again, I'm going to thank Mr. Dong for his investment in downtown, and I know there's a lot of people looking forward to being able to eat outside, so.
And his patience with the process of waiting for the commission to meet. Sorry about that.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, that leads us to 8.3.
Item 8.3, first reading, Ordinance Number 20-11024, amending Chapter 35 of the City Code by adding a new Article 14 to Chapter 35, establishing standards for the construction, maintenance, and modification of small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, and repealing Section 42-70 of the Salina Code.
Mr. Andrew.
This might be a little bit of a tag team. I was going to stall for time if I didn't see Mr. Martin here in the audience, but you have at your places, or should, just added, it was a letter addressed to Mr. Martin that was received this morning, on the day of the meeting, and it addressed four items in the proposed draft ordinance that I think Mr. Martin and I, according to US Cellular, addressed to all their satisfaction, and we'll kind of outline those things that were done. But just by way of background, we do have an existing code. It's Section 4270 of the zoning ordinance. We have in place 30-plus small-cell installations around the community that were installed by a group that started out as Ideatech and then Zayo. But since our ordinance, our zoning ordinance was adopted, we've had both the state legislature and the Federal Communications Commission make changes, which have limited the ability of local jurisdictions in terms of what they can require or not require in the right-of-way. And based on the FCC ruling and the legislature, it's not discretionary as to whether we, a city can allow or not allow the small-cell DAS facilities in the right-of-way. They must be allowed for, and then it's up to us to have rules and a process for approving those. So in 2016, the legislature passed a comprehensive law, and that applied to all wireless facilities on public and private property, also to small-cell facilities that are generally located in the public right-of-way. And then in 2018, the Federal Communications Commission adopted new rules, and their goal was to streamline the review process for wireless facilities. So a DAS or distributed antenna systems, if you think of it in terms of, we have very tall, spread-out cell towers, and they're probably primarily utilized for phone traffic. But the purpose of the DAS is to deal with the use of phones for data, photographs, transmitting things other than voice calls. And so they are a dense system of antennas that are usually shorter and closer together. And so their network is denser, the heights are lower, but they're more frequent and closer together. And so in 2014, the City Commission approved a franchise agreement with Ideatech, and they built a network of 30-plus nodes in Salina, which are leased to Verizon and other carriers. But the city has been approached by Verizon, US Cellular, and other carriers who want to own and manage their own facilities and not necessarily lease from Zayo or Ideatech. They want to be located where they want to locate, and they're interested in bringing 5G service to Salina. And so one of the things that we have been working on as a staff and with the assistance of Mr. Martin is reviewing House Bill 2131, looking at the FCC regulations, going through and figuring out what parts of our ordinance do not conform. One of the things the state legislature did was they eliminated our ability or put a cap on the fees that we could charge. And the other thing that the state legislation does is it authorizes applicants to file a consolidated application with up to 25 individual locations and receive a single permit for a network instead of separate applications for each individual small-cell facility. So just by way of example, when we were approached by Zayo and Ideatech, we told them that the one thing we didn't want was to have them submit all their permits and locations at one time, and they submitted each location individually, and we issued a permit specific to that location. What the legislature has done is said, local communities cannot do that, so if they want to submit an application with 25 locations in one application, then we have to review it as one and issue a single permit for that. And that decision has to be made within 60 days. So some of the, I seem to recall Commissioner Davis may have been on the review at that time, but we, the ordinance that we have now set up certain circumstances where the small-cell facilities had to go before the planning commission. And in one case, there was a case on Merrymount Road that went before the City Commission. And the problem is with what they're referring to as the shot clocks or timelines, there's really no ability to have a public review process. So you're pretty much limited to having an administrative review and have the best regulations and guidelines that you can. So there were two other things that occurred. The FCC adopted additional regulations that further restricted local government authority over installation of small-cell antennas. It's my understanding the FCC is currently being sued by a number of municipalities accusing the FCC of overreach, but those regulations are in place. And then 2019, the Kansas Legislature eliminated the ability of cities to negotiate franchise agreements with wireless service providers. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a franchise agreement with Ideatech, and the legislature has taken away our ability to do that, so cities can still require small-cell deployment agreements or master license agreements with providers. Mr. Martin's been working on two of those, but we felt the best approach was to have new regulations in place applicable to installations, so that we have some criteria for reviewing the proposed wireless facility installations once the applications come in. So our approach was to recommend getting rid of the provisions in the zoning ordinance, replacing them with a new ordinance that would be in the right-of-way management portion of our ordinance. And the proposed regulations would address the following items. The regulations would authorize the placement of small-cell facilities in the public right-of-way. My report says require, but after additional conversations with the providers, we have modified that to encourage but not require pre-application meetings. We found the pre-application approach to be very helpful with Ideatech and Zayo. We've already had some pre-application meetings with some of the providers. We do think that's a good way to start, but we modified the language to encourage it and not require it. It sets out the application's submitted requirements. It provides for an administrative review by staff. There's some general location criteria. So in residential areas, it requires poles to be placed at the common lot line instead of in front of somebody's front door. And it requires poles on corner lots to be placed on the non-addressed side, again, to keep them away from the front door. The other aspect of this that sometimes is overlooked and is most frequently complained about is not the antenna that's up on the pole, but it's the equipment box that's placed on the ground at the base of the pole. And we've received complaints in the case of Ideatech and Zayo, people complaining about the box being placed in their front yard, and explaining to them it's actually the public right-of-way and not your yard, but nonetheless, they don't, there seems to be more objection to the equipment box than to the antenna itself. The regulations would prohibit the placement of antennas on decorative streetlights, so in places like downtown or, say, the country-club neighborhood where you have decorative streetlights, we wouldn't allow antennas to be placed on those. In the grid portion, the older portion of the city, they encourage that antennas be located in alleys instead of on streets when possible. It sets height limits for new and replacement poles used to support antennas, and it requires that all antennas be enclosed in shrouds, which we refer to as can antennas. And so you wouldn't have just the wires there, there would be a shroud around it that would hide that. And then in the case of support structures and equipment cabinets, there's a requirement that those be painted a camouflage color or a neutral gray. So we put together a set of draft aesthetic standards that we discussed with the planning commission in 2019, and they agreed and made a recommendation to you that Section 4270 of the zoning ordinance should be repealed in its entirety and replaced by this new set of aesthetic standards, and that would become part of Chapter 35, which regulates the use of the public right-of-way. Since that time, Mr. Martin and I have been working on the draft and have been soliciting input from wireless service providers on both the aesthetic standards and a template for a master license agreement. And we have gotten quite a bit of input back from the providers, including the letter that we received just this morning. And so there were four items there that were identified, and the first item expressed concern about a definition that was in the code and the fact that it didn't seem to recognize or allow for other support. or allow for other support structures. So we have modified and will modify before final approval the addition of the word "support structure" in addition to the utility poles, and that addressed U.S. Cellular's concern. We explained as to application fees that we will be bringing a fee resolution back to you that you will have to adopt, and that those fees will be consistent with the state legislature's guidance and restrictions on that. As to Section 35-296, our draft requested the provider to give us at least three photo simulations of each site, and so we have proposed to modify that to require a single photo only, but to give the plan reviewer the discretion to request additional photos if those photos are needed to determine compliance with our regulations. And then we explained that as far as 35-297, which deals with the timelines for issuing or denying a permit, that rather than specifying that in the ordinance, because it seems to have changed twice in the last three years, we are just proposing the approach to say that we will issue or deny permits in the timelines established by state and federal law. That way, if they change their mind again with the FCC or the legislature, we don't have to change the ordinance. So that is how we addressed each of those items, and so those -- then the final item was height, and we held our ground on the height, and we were not proposing a blanket height limit of 50 feet. We're proposing one of 35 feet or 40 feet based on what is in the surrounding area. And so there is a provision in the draft that allows the plan reviewer to grant a waiver of the height limit or other requirements if there are extenuating circumstances, and so we pointed that out. If there's a circumstance where they're proposing a 50-foot pole, we have the discretion to approve it or deny it. But the -- most of our signs in the community are in the 30 to 35-foot range. All of our existing DAS poles and antennas are 34 feet tall, so we cannot see raising the limit to 50 feet as they originally requested, and so they have -- they're satisfied with our proposal in that regard. I don't know if I addressed all of those, Aaron, but Mr. Martin and I had a conference call with U.S. Cellular Group at 2:00 before the meeting, and we got all these items resolved to their satisfaction, and so we just wanted to be able to report that.
So there could be several providers, these are their own systems?
Yes, and one of the -- it's a big thing in state law. It's a big thing with the FCC, a lot of the -- including our original ordinance, a lot of our -- and we have that on all the towers built today. It's basically forced co-location. If you, for instance, our tower that we have out at East Crawford Recreation Area, there's five spots on there for five users, and we require -- have historically required people that build towers to allow for co-location by other users, but the state legislature and the FCC have taken away cities' abilities to require co-location.
So no co-location. Can you get two of these in your front yard, then, on opposite sides of your property?
Well, we have spacing requirements that they -- we have to look at the pole separation in the vicinity, and they have to match that. But there is -- we've had discussions with both U.S. Cellular and with Verizon, and they're not interested in co-location or cooperation. They're interested in establishing their own networks. So with that in mind, there were -- when we talked to several of them, they were not aware -- I don't know if all the Ideatech locations are being used, but Ideatech does not provide cellular service. They just built the infrastructure, and then they try to lease it to the carriers. And so both Verizon and U.S. Cellular are not interested in that model. They wish to -- they wish to own and install their own network.
So how does this affect, like, the towers out at East Crawford?
It doesn't really have any impact on those because those towers provide coverage to broad area, and they're primarily used for voice transmission for people making cellphone calls. But for all the data and things that are being used on phones, that's what the 5G network is for, is for all the data transmissions, the texting, the sharing of photos, all those types of things.
Do we have any idea, like, for the city the size of Salina, how many of those would we have within the city limits?
The network, we had a pre -- I'll call it a pre-pre-application meeting with U.S. Cellular, and they had about 25 locations that they had identified where they were looking to put either -- they have the ability. Westar, or now Evergy, has been open to it, but since the merger, it's our understanding that KCPL is less receptive to co-locating on existing utility poles. And so a number -- over half the locations we have for Ideatech, they just placed antennas on existing poles and didn't have many of their own. But if those situations don't work out, then I've -- the ones I've seen preliminarily have about 25 locations.
Mr. Andrew touched on this before, but this has been an ongoing evolution at state and federal regulatory level, and then the industry's made a good case. They've lobbied very effectively, and the federal government's treating it as an essential service, that without this type of deployment, you won't have 5G or whatever the next generation of G is in the works, and they just view it as essential, to the point of inserting themselves in place of local authority to make sure that there's no impediment.
Who's the arbiter in case of an ongoing dispute between the utility company and the city as far as location or some other aspect of the towers?
Well, the way that we worked it before and the way we could hopefully work it in this case is, and I know that they've had numerous meetings with them, but if they can show, for whatever reason, that it's not feasible for them to locate on an existing pole, then they can propose a new pole, and then that's the criteria, the location criteria we have to encourage them in the central part of the city to be in alleys and to just try to make sure that if new poles are put up, that they're not in front of somebody's front door, that they're on a common lot line, or that they're on the side of a house that's on a corner lot. But there is -- it's really -- it's discretionary for the power company depending on. They are not required to allow the cellular providers to locate on their poles. It's just that Westar worked with them and did pole attachment agreements for a number of them already in the community, and since they've been bought out and merged, it remains to be seen whether they will be equally receptive.
So if the utility wants to --
If they can demonstrate that the Evergy will not let me set this on their pole, and I need to be in this location, then we're going to have to work with them to find a location for a new pole that meets our criteria.
So if you can't come to an agreement, then who decides if that pole goes in where they want it?
Right now, I'm the staff person that would be reviewing those, and then I would deny it, and then we'd see what happens.
Yeah, we could end up in court.
Okay.
With the law not --
So they don't have ultimate carte blanche they can put it -- they'd have to go through a legal process?
Mr. Martin may be able to -- well, certainly he can speak to it better than I can, but there's quite a bit of presumption in their favor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Aaron Martin, legal counsel. As Mr. Andrew and Mr. Scragg have mentioned, there's quite a bit of preemption at both the federal and state level in this area, and probably the most direct preemption on that topic, Commissioner Davis, would be one of the areas of preemption is the state statutory preemption that prohibits cities from evaluating an application based on the availability of other potential locations. So currently, our framework under the zoning code that would be repealed by this is the city is in the driver's seat, so to speak, in terms of proposing alternative locations and evaluating each location relative to how it looks in the neighborhood and potentially better-suited locations. But under the current state and federal framework, the city has very limited ability to say no at a particular location unless it is pursuant to the objective criteria in this ordinance, or unless there's some very blatant public health, safety, and welfare problem with that location. So ultimately, if a provider comes in and has a specific location they want to put a tower in, the city would likely have to approve that unless there's something in this ordinance that is not being complied with.
So if the city was steadfast and said, "We're not going to improve this location," let's just say it's right at the front door of a building that's of sentimental importance in town, for whatever reason, we're not going to improve it, utility can still put it there?
Well, the -- there are some criteria in the ordinance that would go to that issue. For example, in a residential neighborhood, we've indicated that a new pole must be placed at the lot line rather than in front of the property. Likewise, in a non-residential area, a pole or any attached small cell facilities could not obstruct access to the building.
So that is enforceable?
That is an objective criteria that would be enforceable unless a provider could demonstrate that that was the only location in the world that would work for their service objectives, in which case federal law and state law may result in the provider having some ability to ultimately place it there. So I will sit back down unless there are any further questions for me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Unhappy reality.
Any other questions? Comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
Mr. Mayor, I move the City Commission to approve the proposed addition of Article 14 to Chapter 35 of the Salina Code and approve ordinance number 2011024 on first reading and repeal Section 4270 of the zoning ordinance in its entirety.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed addition of Article 14 to Chapter 35 of the Salina Code and approve ordinance 220-11024 on first reading and to repeal Section 42-70 of the zoning ordinance in its entirety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0, and I guess we'll have second reading next week, then?
Correct.
Okay.
That didn't come across the audio. Apologies. We'll identify for you on second reading the changes that we made pursuant to our conversation with U.S. Cellular, and then we hope to have the fee resolution brought back to you so we have a established fees for the applications that we can take.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will move to other business.
Just one little plug before that. In that little five-minute break that we had before the 4:00 meeting, I was able to run upstairs, do my van voting, come back, and you get a sticker and a freestylist. So van voting is open, doesn't take long. How many minutes would you want for that first one?
Let's try 25.
Okay, before you read that, I'm just going to let everyone know that I will not be voting on moving into executive session, nor will I attend executive session due to a conflict of interest.
All right.
It's just for the first?
Yes, just on 9.1, yes.
Mr. -- should I address it to the mayor or the vice mayor?
I'll go ahead and run. I'm just not going to vote.
The mayor or vice?
Mr. Mayor, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss the subject of a specific economic development prospect based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4. The open meeting will resume in this room at 8:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move into executive session until -- I'm sorry, was that 8:00?
Yeah, that'd give us two minutes to walk up and down.
Okay, 8:00. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
I would clarify we're going to meet in --
4-0.
4-0, sorry. Thank you.
We're going to meet in Room 105, and the agenda includes the possibility of action, but we do not expect any action to follow this item today.
Okay.
No action.
Okay. How long do we need for the next one?
I was going to say 45 minutes, but after your reaction, we can try it in 30.
Okay. 30 minutes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move the City Commission recess into executive session -- you did say 30 minutes, correct? Thank you. For 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel the subject of the legal considerations relating to final points of negotiation relating to the Expo Center lease based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room.
8:32.
8:32, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to move into executive session for 30 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll be back here at 8:32.
Once again, we'll meet in Room 105, and there is the possibility of action this time.
We have no action to be taken at this time. So with that, unless there's any other --
Mayor, would you accept a motion to adjourn?
I would. Grab a second.
So move.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I didn't think so. We'll see you next week.